Since Bethany Lutheran Church was built here in 1967. We understand that the proposed building is forty feet tall and almost twice as large as what the present zoning allows. A restaurant, a garden office, medical office building, clinic, or retail building would all be possible developments for this site under the current zoning at a properly scaled and widely minor support. Any of these possible developments are likely to be more compatible with the church and the area means our office building in most form beneficial to the neighborhood. We respectfully urge you to vote no on the rezoning proposal. Thank you. Thank you. We have one more speaker to run.
Good evening, Councilwoman Dowell. I am Ms. McRoss, attorney representing the owners of the Rinnian Tower. I was billing Mr. Sullivan and the tenants have already given you very good reasons to deny this application. I just want to make a couple of points. First is question of view. The statement's able of view is not protected. Well, that's correct if you build a building in compliance with the existing requirements. But I'm going to ask permission to build a bigger one. And yes, view does become completely relevant along with all the other considerations that go into that question and that's what's happened here. And I think it's important to step back from what's going on with this application. The only reason the rezoning application is filed is because they want to build a bigger building than us. They've admitted that. They're not asking for a change of use. Use is already allowed. They want more square footage. They want a bigger building than what they're proposing. But there's a request like that. There's a process that's been in place for many years. If you want more square footage or if you're short on parking space or if you want to build a building higher than what's permitted, you go to the Board of Adjustment and ask for a variance. It's been around a lot of years and it's worked very well. But this applicant does not want to do that. Why is that? Well, Ms. Miller actually told me why in committee meeting on this matter. The reason is they don't have to show a hardship. They don't want to have to do that. That's understandable. They'd rather come to the city council and ask for a zoning change where you don't have to make that showing. But what you end up with is an in-run to certain event, the variance process. And if the council begins freely granting zoning changes like these, then what's the point of having zoning? Now, it's not just a theoretical problem. There are several examples of what could happen in that situation. If you look at the commercial zoning districts, for example, CS, CG, and CH, there are thirty-nine uses that are permitted as a right in all three districts, as Mr. Ben would point it out. But if you're in, say, CS or CG and you're short on your required street frontage, don't have to worry about a variance. Just go get a zoning change to CH where there's no street frontage required. You didn't have to show a hardship. You do the same thing if you're in OM district and you want to go to OMH for other factors like setbacks, parking requirements, number of parking spaces. It's a rather easy way to solve those kinds of problems without having to go to the Board of Adjustment and seek a variance. And the fact that there is an optional development plan in this application actually proves my point. What happened was as this application got to the city council the first time, the thinking was, well, we're realizing now that a straight zoning change is not appropriate, so we're going to pile all this stuff on top of it as an optional development plan and really kind of force it to be similar to a variance in that respect with some restrictions. First of all, those restrictions don't even apply if this particular building is not built. So it ended up with an even more cumbersome and complicated arrangement. An optional development plan does have its place, but this is not that place. Finally, I know there's some temptation to approve this simply on the theory that, well, there's nothing on the land now, and if we approve it, at least there will be something. But that's false logic because if you took that approach, all what you'd do is just start downzoning every property in the city until something would be built. And that's not the way zoning is supposed to work. Something that's appropriate and our client is entirely fine with the existing zoning with a self-storage use that's built in compliance with the existing zoning, obviously they're okay with that. They'd put to do everything that they can to facilitate a new building that would benefit the neighborhood. Their developers, they know to do that.
Yeah, one minute left.
And I think, getting back to the question of approval, it does take courage to turn these down when somebody's proposing development on a vacant lot or one that's been vacant for a while. I think if you just look at the outlet mall that was proposed over in the Turkey Mountain area, that would have been a huge economic boost and benefit for the city. The city council looked at that and said, nah, it's going to cause too much injury to the neighborhood. That took some courage because there was a lot of pressure to do that and I think you can show the same courage tonight. But the fact is, if you approve this application, you're going to be swamped. I understand and believe with owners and developers, you want to do the same thing that this particular applicant is doing. They have a proper path to seek what they want without going to the Board of Adjustment and do that. Thank you for your time and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
You may have questions later, so as we go through this process. So just stay in person. Mr. VanderWilling, did you want to come back? Are you right there?
I'll have a fine speaking and I'll wrap up.
Okay. You have up to ten minutes to respond to questions.
Good evening, Council. My name is Andrew Aiken, 2305 Cedar Springs, Suite 200, Dallas, Texas. I am a managing partner of Baron Holdings, a developer, prospective developer here. And I wanted to speak very briefly and provide you a little more context than just the jargon and the zoning jargon that you got. We started this company three years ago, a little less than three years ago. We've invested over $135 million self-storage alone across the United States, Austin, Raleigh, Los Angeles, Seattle, Portland, all cities that are transition-type cities that have high intellectual capital, folks that are moving in there. And folks kept asking me about Oklahoma because I'm from Oklahoma. And they said, are you going to zone, are you going to build anything there? And I said, well, I don't know if we are or not. There's a lot of self-storage in Oklahoma. So then we looked at Tulsa because a friend of mine said, you know what, you need to look at Tulsa and look at along this corridor. And we looked at it and we said, you know what, there is a need for self-storage, which that tends to fall on deaf ears. Admittedly, self-storage is not the sexy hotel or restaurant that everybody wants. But when we looked at it and we saw self-storage, we said, Oklahomans use about ten square feet per person in the entire state. And we look at it in three-mile radius and there is five square feet of self-storage in that three-mile radius. And that is a huge tremendous need. To give you some perspective, we build in Los Angeles, that's about what we see there. That is a, and they're dealing with 290,000 folks in a three-mile. So there's a huge need for that in the community. Whether people like the need or not, that's up for debate. I think something that's very relevant here is, yes, we are asking for increased FAR. There is no doubt about that. We would like that so we can build what would be the nicest self-storage facility in all Oklahoma, undoubtedly. It's enclosed, three stories, again, that tends to fall on deaf ears, I know. It's kind of an oxymoron, but it is. And it would be the nicest self-storage facility. In order to build that, because that's what we view self-storage going towards, something secure, something you can call up your kids to go in and go to the storage facility and not worry about something happening to them, that's where self-storage is going. That's why they're being built nicer. We see that in every different city. So in order to do that, we require a little more space and that's what we're asking for. Otherwise, and I can assure you, the offers that were made on this land and what would get built if we don't build would be self-storage. And it would be horrific self-storage. And it's a dangerous game to play to say, I like what you're doing here, but why don't you go down and build it down the street? I think that's a bad mentality. That's not a pro-developer stance to look at. So I just caution you there, but we are, we are more than willing to work with our neighbors, do what we have to do, and be good neighbors. And I think we've proved that and through some of what we've gone through over the last four or five months now.
So for the record, I do understand, I believe I understand the position that city legal has taken in regard to the alleged protest petition and the sixty percent number that you heard, we're still of the opinion that those are definitely, they don't meet the standards required in the code and that's not really a fit for this meeting. So the view of proximity, the discussion that we just heard, I want you to realize that those would apply to anything. If you built the garden offices, that sounds awfully small and cute and quiet, but you could build a two-story, three-story building right on this property line. Put all your parking out in front of it toward the highway and put it right on the property line, twenty feet away from this tower. And so that's all been, let me see what I can throw out there that sticks with you. But this has always been a use issue and nothing really more than that. To just address, I guess, a couple of the points, I do like the Dallas-based developer, the out-of-towers, the Texas thing. I appreciate that. But from a building retail stores, you've got a huge retail store facility a block away that's got vacant storefronts in it. This is a use that's needed in this area, whether anyone wants to admit it or not. I think we've addressed the variance issue with the exception of maybe Susan and maybe a few of you up here. I would be, I don't think I'd be out of school to say that I know more about variances than anybody in here. I've been on the Board of Adjustment for a long time. So I understand how that process works. In that development process, it's a discussion with Incog staff. What's the, just like you heard in the parking lot, what's the best way to get this development? What's the best way to alleviate these concerns? And I'm not going to buck the system to go against what Incog's requesting that we do and then go to the planning commission and have them tell the planning commission, we told them to do something different, but they want to be here and then answer those same questions to you folks. The spot zoning term is something people like to go around. You heard about demand for the land. We've also heard in other meetings that we're overpaying for the land. Somehow paying more for land is a bad thing and I don't want you to think about that. This property has been vacant for several years. It's been an ad hoc, licensed car lot. The property owner, the tower, is kind of using it as maybe overflow parking currently. I did think it was, seemed apparent to me that the matrix letter and the church letter may have been penned by the same author, that both of those look to be view arguments and requesting a different use be built on the property. And that's just frankly not appropriate. The church, they submitted this letter, they submitted their alleged protest letter. The only claim, the only time they've ever shown up was to a neighborhood meeting. And the claim that we heard was that folks traveling on the highway at highway speed would be able to look over, see their church and say, that looks like a place I'd like to go worship. I don't know anybody that's ever found a church that way. Maybe driving around a neighborhood, maybe, but if anybody's whizzed by at eighty miles an hour and picked their church that way, I'd be impressed. The view issue is, is just untenable. It's not enforceable. That we want a bigger building, you heard that, that is what we're here for. And it's this slippery slope of everybody's going to come down here for a change in zoning is, I think frankly just ludicrous. So with that, I'll certainly answer the questions that you've got. I'll give you my last two minutes.
I think we may have questions in a minute. I know we do have some questions for Susan. So if you could, at least I'll know where you are now. And I'll just remind again, I know you guys probably heard Stan, but just there are seats available over here for those who are standing and are interested.
Hi, Susan. So I just want to make sure that we're all understanding the floor area ratio term correctly as we contemplate this situation. Is there anything in the code that addresses building height or building footprint as it relates to this in the commercial zone? Or is it, is the only thing that discusses size, the floor area ratio term?
In the, in the office commercial categories, the only zoning district that has a height limitation is Office Light and that's thirty-five feet. None of the other CG, CS, CH, OH, OMH, none of those have height restrictions. There's not a footprint limitation that's not of terminology or anything that's in our code. FAR, yes, not every, has an FAR, no. CG does and CH doesn't, that's why we're here today. Do I have to answer your questions?
So to be clear, in the current zoning, if someone wanted to build a six-story tall building, they could do that as long as the floor, the footprint of the building was small, right?
Right, very small.
Right, right. There's some allowable amount-
Under CG, it would be very small.
Some allowable amount of square footage relative to the size of the lot?
Right. And if you, just to really make it simple, and that's not like me really, but to make it really simple, if you have, you know, a hundred-by-hundred-foot lot, you can have seventy-five percent of that can be covered with floor area ratio. So it could be, I mean, so that could be one story, seventy-five percent, or you could take that and of course make it smaller and talk, that makes sense. Yeah, that's right.
So the, the conversation tonight and some of the comments from the church, for example, or, or even the tower next door that have to do with view theoretically could be, you know, you could build a building tall right up against the side of the other building with a smaller gap between the two of them and still have view issues.
I mean, there's a, there's a pretty big difference in scale though as to what you could do in CG and CH. So it would be, it could be a pretty significant difference in scale or mass.
Okay, I'll put it on the spot. One attorney said a third bigger, one attorney said twice the size.
Well, there's no limitation in CH, so it can be as big as it can be.
But is the proposed building twice the size of what would be allowed as was stated or is it a third bigger?
I don't know, I have to do the math. You'd have to give me a minute.
Okay. I really am just trying to distill it down to the basic question. And I would agree with the comments made about use. We are not here to discuss use. This is a, this is an issue of zoning. All of those uses, but one seems to be possible one way or the other. I'm just trying to understand what the ramifications are of changing the zoning or not. So if we were to, if we were to deny the zoning change, a storage facility could open on that lot just as easily as is being proposed, but it would be a story shorter, for example?
Probably, you probably couldn't do two stories at that, at that lot coverage. That probably would exceed the .75 FAR, but you could do a one story-
Seventy-five percent of the area with a single-story storage facility.
Yes, that's right.
So it wouldn't block the view necessarily of anybody but the first floor, but everyone else in the tower would have a view of a one-story tall kind of storage facility where you'd drive your car up to a garage door and unload it loading. Yes. So the question becomes, do we take the shot that by changing the zoning, we have a product, a building that has gone through an optional development plan, has planted trees and agreed to set back distances and shown a preview rendering of what the building will look like, or take our chances with keeping the zoning the same, knowing that a storage facility could come in anyway, it would just be a different kind of storage facility? Am I distilling this appropriately?
That's right. Yeah, I mean, if there are no limitations in our zoning code on materials, so it could be, metal doors could be, metal buildings, you know, could be something pretty attractive without an optional development plan.
Okay, so my last question, I think, has to do with why it is zoned as it is today and what the mix of zoning is around it. I heard the spot zoning term. I know that the building next door is an office zoning. This is in a, on an access road next to an interstate. And I know that we see all kinds of things along interstates, on access roads, everything from retail to hotels to restaurants to, you know, whatever. How is that, is there a typical or consistent thing that one would anticipate these properties running access roads to be zoned or is it a grab bag?
It's so, so it's interesting because typically, sure, you see higher densities along major thoroughfares, but, so that's, that's a general answer, but it's interesting because the term spot zoning to me is antiquated. And zoning, of course, you know, we're, the trend in planning has moved towards mixed uses, not necessarily single-use zoning, that's sort of where that, that term originated. But if you look, you can kind of zoom out. So if you look at this area, it is a pretty random mixture of zoning. There's CS, CH, OMH, I mean, there's almost everything. In fact, there's SR, which almost doesn't exist anywhere else, which is like scientific research. So there's really no set pattern of the zoning of any zoning district that we're, it's just a lot of different things and, you know, and it, and it works.
So sometimes when we zone things a certain way, we zone them that way almost anticipating a zoning change. I have to think about agricultural zoning that exists inside the city. It almost exists as a, as a mechanism to give a governing body a say-so when the proposed development comes along because it requires that. We've seen this here repeatedly, ag zoning property that apartment developers want to develop.
Yeah, I think, I mean, ag is the default, is the beginning place.
But it isn't zone, I guess my point, we don't zone it ag because we hope necessarily that people are putting animals or growing crops on it. It's there almost as, we're pretty sure it's going to be changed at some point in time. Sometimes we zone things very specifically what they are for a very prescriptive reason, anticipating no change, in fact, anticipating a fight should someone try to change the zone.
Right.
We've seen that. On the spectrum of, we expect to change the ag zone to, we will never change the zoning, which we might see like in the middle of the city. What, where is, where is access road along interstate in terms of its-
I mean, quite frankly, I think this is what it looks like and I think, see, and I know that I was involved in that conversation with Stuart too back in March and we talked about, you know, what zoning was appropriate and along an interstate and this, I mean, you can see CH is even further down off Yale Avenue. So, I mean, I think the definition of CH in the code really lends itself to this type of setting. And not that that's the only zoning that should be there, but that's, in my opinion, very appropriate to be in that location.
Okay, this really is my last question. Should someone come along with one of these approved uses, completely compliant with the existing zoning? Is there any mechanism that would require them to agree to a spacing requirement or to plant certain trees or to agree to any of the aesthetic or design standards that have been agreed to in this process?
If they were already CH?
Right.
Right. No, they, these are higher standards in the optional development plan that would, then would be applied if they just had CH.
So actually because of the rezoning request, it ensured that some of these design questions-
Right. We get a bite in the apple because this is a discretionary process.
We have a shot to throw some of that in there with the trees. Okay, thank you.
I had a question and you sort of answered it there, but the question of this should have, would it have been more appropriate to go through looking for a variance or board of adjustment versus zoning? Could you speak to that? I mean, is there, is that, is there a typical decision matrix that says this goes this way versus changing the zoning?
Not really. And I, I mean, I, you know, and I know we talked about those two things and I think, you know, either avenue could have been pursued. I don't know that one was necessarily a lot better than the other. This, based on the definition of CH in the code and, and its location along the interstate, we thought this was appropriate to seek because of all those factors. But again, it could have, you know, that a variance through the Board of Adjustment could have been sought as well, but this was the avenue based on the location that we thought was probably the most preferable.
Do you have any questions for those speakers? No, Councilwoman.
Okay, so I asked you this question and I can, I can read your response, but I just want to make sure that we cover the various instances that were covered in this major service company, which was very nice and I truly get what they want next door, the restaurant, the retail outlets, the medical clinic, but I asked you to come up with some other things that could go on CG. And you wrote, fast food restaurants, I asked Taco Bell, said Taco Bell could be the restaurant that would go in there. Gas station, could get any kind of gas station. Auto paint and body shop, car lot, a wide variety of things could go.
Discount Dollar Store.
Just to go over this about CG zoning. So, so what I've explained to you, the, the party that owns the building is, when we first got this, it felt like we didn't have a burden hand that we really wanted. It was typical self-storage and if that was going to be it, then I personally wasn't interested. And then Councilwoman Gilbert went back and the optional development plan was created and now the burden handle is pretty darn, a lot better, a lot better than it did. My, my concern is that if we let that go, we could end up with, we could end up with something better, but we could end up with something a lot worse. And so we all have the empty of the basket now having to vote in a situation where there's not a group of people that have come to consensus. So we're, we're having to have the, have to decide what the final outcome is by voting either yes or no, which is always difficult and tough. I'd like it to be much clearer in this case. So thank you for helping me determine what else could be put on that space that might not be nearly as attractive to the people that are sitting in that office building looking to the north. Did you hear the developers from Dallas? Yeah, I missed that, but we're going to do your thing. I'm happy with the developers wanting to come through sometimes.
Is that mine?
But you could bring them in that burger with you next time. That would be too bad.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions or any further questions? Any other council questions?
Need for approval?
Councilwoman Gilbert? Councilwoman.
Sorry. This has been, this has been ongoing for quite some time and I appreciate everyone that has been a big part of this, Mr. Wiggins, your team, Mr. VanderWilling, developer. The thing, I mean, when this first came up, we were, the neighborhood was concerned about it at first. We've had numerous developments to where, you know, we, anytime it approaches into, onto a neighborhood, we always want to have those conversations with residents-
A storage facility could come in anyway, it would just be a different kind of storage facility. Am I distilling this appropriately?
That's right. Yeah, I mean, there are no limitations in our code on materials, so it could be, metal doors could be metal building, you know, could be something pretty attractive without an optional development plan.
Okay, so my last question, I think, has to do with why it is zoned as it is today? And what the mix of zoning is around it. I heard the spot zoning term. I know that the building next door is an office zoning. This is in an, on an access road next to an interstate. And I know that we see all kinds of things along interstates, on access roads, everything from retail to hotel to restaurant to, whatever. How is that, is there a typical or consistent thing that one would anticipate these properties running access roads to be zoned? Or is it a grab bag?
It's so, so it's interesting because typically sure you see higher intensities along major thoroughfares, but, so that's, that's a general answer, but it's interesting because the term spot zoning to me is antiquated. And zoning, of course, you know, we're, the trend in planning has been towards mixed uses, not necessarily single use zoning. That's, that's sort of where that, that term originated. But if you look, can you kind of zoom out? So if you look at this area, it is a pretty random mixture of zoning. There's C S, C H, O M H, C, I mean, there's almost everything. And in fact, there's S R, which almost doesn't exist anywhere else, which is like scientific research. So there's really no set pattern of the zoning, of any zoning district that we're, it's just, it's just a lot of different things and, and you know, and it, and it works.
So sometimes when we zone things a certain way, we zone them that way almost anticipating a zoning change. I have to think about agricultural zoning that exists inside the city. It almost exists as a, as a mechanism to give the governing body a say so when the proposed development comes along because it requires that. We've seen this here repeatedly, ag zone property that apartment developers want to develop.
Yeah, I think, I mean, ag is the default, is the beginning place.
But it isn't zone, I guess my point, we don't zone it ag because we hope necessarily that people are putting animals or growing crops on it. It's there almost as, we're pretty sure it's going to be changed at some point. Sometimes we zone things very specifically what they are for a very prescriptive reason, anticipating no change. In fact, anticipating a fight should someone try to change the zone.
Right.
We've seen that. On the spectrum of we expect to change the ag zone to, we will never change the zoning, which we might see like in the middle of the city. What, where is, where is access road along interstate?
Yeah.
In terms of its.
I mean, quite frankly, I think this is what it looks like and I think, see, and, and I know that I was involved in that conversation with Stuart too back in March. And we talked about, you know, what zoning was appropriate and along an interstate in this, I mean, you can see C H is even further down off Yale Avenue. So, I mean, I think the definition of C H in the code really lends itself to this type of setting. And not that that's the only zoning that should be there, but that's, in my opinion, very appropriate to be in that location.
Okay, this really is my last question. Should someone come along with one of these approved uses, completely compliant with the existing zoning? Is there any mechanism that would require them to agree to a spacing requirement or to plant certain trees? Or to agree to any of the aesthetic or design standards that have been agreed to in this process?
If they were already C H?
Right.
Right. No, they, these are higher standards in the optional development plan that would, then would be applied if they just had C H.
So actually because of the rezoning request, it ensured that some of these design questions would be.
We get a bite in the apple because this is a discretionary process.
Shot to throw some of that in there with the trees. Okay, thank you.
I had a question, and you sort of answered it there, but, but the, the question of this should have, would it have been more appropriate to go through looking for a variance through the Board of Adjustment versus zoning? Could you speak to that? I mean, is there, is that, is there a typical decision matrix that says this goes this way versus changing the zone?
Not really. And I, I mean, I, you know, and I know we talked about those two things and I think, you know, either avenue could have been pursued. I don't know that one was necessarily a lot better than the other. This, based on the definition of C H in the code and, and its location along the interstate, we thought this was appropriate to seek because of all those factors. But again, it could have, you know, that, that a variance through the Board of Adjustment could have been sought as well. But this was the avenue based on the location that we thought was probably the most preferable.
Do you have any questions for those speakers?
Okay, so I asked you this question and I can, I can read your response, but I, I just want to make sure that we cover the various instances that were covered in this major service company, which was very nice. And I truly get what they want next door, the restaurant, the retail outlets, the medical clinic. But I asked you to come up with some other things that could go on C G. And he wrote, fast food restaurants, I asked Taco Bell, said Taco Bell could be the restaurant that would go in there. Gas station, could get any kind of gas station. Auto paint and body shop, car lot, a wide variety of things could go.
Discount dollar store.
So, so what I've explained to you, the, the party that owns the building is, you know, when we first got this, it felt like we didn't have a burden hand that we really wanted. It was typical self-storage and if that was going to be it, then I personally wasn't interested. And then Counselor Gilbert went back and the optional development plan was created and now the burden hand looks pretty dark. A lot better, a lot better than it did. My, my concern is that if we let that go, we could end up with, we could end up with something better, but we could end up with something a lot worse. And so we all have the one and beautiful basket now having to vote in a situation where there's not a group of people that have come to consensus. So we're, we're having to have the, have to decide what the final outcome is by voting either yes or no, which is always difficult and tough. I, I'd like it to be much clearer in this case. So thank you for helping me determine what else could be put on that space that might not be nearly as attractive to the people that are sitting in that office building looking to the north. Did you hear the developers from Dallas? Yeah, I missed that, but we're into your thing. I'm happy the developers want to come through sometimes.
Is that mine?
But you could bring them in that burger with you next time that we meet together.
Thank you.
Yeah, can, we can put a new burger on their land?
We do know the person.
Yeah, we can go down street.
But we do know the person. Okay, well, let's move back.
Yes. Have any questions or any questions? Any other council questions?
Need for approval?
Counselor Gilbert. Counselors.
Yeah, this has been, this has been ongoing for quite some time and I appreciate everyone that has been a big part of this. Mr. Wiggins, your team, Mr. VanderWilly, developer. The thing, I mean, when this first came up, we were, the, the neighborhood was concerned about it at first. We've had numerous developments to where, you know, we, we, anytime it approaches into, onto a neighborhood, we always want to have those conversations with residents. And we've all had plenty of those, as counselors, we've all had plenty of those meetings. I've had plenty of those myself with different developers. Some of them decide to show, some of them don't decide to show. So I, I appreciate everyone being a big part of it, the neighborhood, the residents being there as, as well. And, and you listening to their concerns. You didn't have to go as far as you did with the optional development plan. I appreciate you listening to the concerns of both on the, on the office side of Meridian Tower and, and also the residents that sit back into the neighborhood. I, I have lived in this, this area for, for quite some time. Actually, it's part of my neighborhood. And I, I have seen that particular corner go from a restaurant to a temporary staffing office, to, as Mr. VanderWilly mentioned earlier, to a used car lot, which the neighborhood was not very happy with. And of course, that used car lot did not have to go through the procedures that, that we're going through tonight just because of the zoning. So the residents that, that I have talked to, that were, were at the meeting, they felt that their voices were heard and their concerns were addressed. And, and I, Mr. VanderWilly, I completely understand what, what you're saying this evening about, you know, the different use of that, that particular piece of property. But, and then also the, the development that's going on with the shopping center just to the east of the proposed lot. That shopping center has, has been there for quite some time, ten to fifteen years. Used to be the, the side of the old children's medical center. And now it, for many years, it was just the Best Buy and Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. So just this last year or so, we, we just got another strong anchor in that, in that particular shopping center, World Market. And with that has had a few other stores that have opened up in that shopping center. So, but again, there's, there's lots of other storefronts that are still vacant within that certain shopping center. So, so tonight I want to move, move to approve item five D, including the additional development standards as written, and submitted to the council by the applicant this evening. Second.
And before we vote, I just want to note for the record, there is a protest filed in this case. There, and then a, I don't remember what the exact word, language was, but, but a, an appeal of the protest, which I don't think is the right word, but so there was some dispute right now over the number, the percent of the vote up here that would be required for approval. We decided to deal with that because, because it may be a moot point. If this is turned down or if it is, or if it is approved by seven or more, that's kind of a moot point. If it, if this item is approved and is approved by less than, fewer than seven votes, then the council will have to take up the matter of the appeal, but we'll, we'll deal with that after we vote on the motion as presented. Keith, please call.
Manager, to, to that point, so tonight, because there are eight of us, it has to. What's?
Yeah.
It needs seven outright for the one standard, but it needs five, just a majority, not any other, not, not any other kind of, you know, vote, just to pass on its own.
Counselor, to, since there has been a protest filed, under our rules, it takes three quarters of the entire.
There's a dispute over that. So that's if it's seven, it either takes, and the council will have to determine that if that comes up.
If we have, if we have less than six, seven votes in favor, then it becomes a question of which of the two calculations will control the applicants or the protesters.
Right.
So.
But, but to your question, yes, five, if it's.
Pass and then we can do appeal.
Then we decide, right. So if it is approved by five votes or six votes in favor, then the council has to take up the appeal issue. If it's approved by seven or more, or if this fails, then you don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Keith, please call the roll.
Counselor Kimbrough?
No.
Counselor Hall Harper?
No.
Counselor Q?
Yes.
Counselor Patrick?
Yes.
Counselor Ewing?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Amera?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
We have six votes in favor.
Way to make our evening more complicated. Okay, so now we have to deal with the appeal issue. And Mr. Omealia, do you, I mean, I can kind of state what the issue is, or do you wish to, or to, or Janine or someone who's been involved with this? Or why we have a dispute here?
I will call on the manager of my real estate and zoning division. But the council adopts rules and procedures for submitting protests in this particular section of the zoning code. There are no provisions in the code stating that the council makes the determination of validity of the zoning protest and its challenge, but it's logical to conclude that the council has that authority. So I think we just ask Janine to come up and, and explain the situation for the council.
Counselor Janine Van Wolkemberg from the legal department. As you know, there has been a protest filed against this zoning application and.
Pardon me?
Okay. It, two, two property owners signed the protest petition. Those two property owners own fairly large pieces of property. And if you draw a three hundred foot radius around the parcel that is subject to the application and calculate the acreage within that radius and outside the property that's subject to the application. And if you subtract from that acreage, the right of way for the highway and for the streets, then those two property owners own enough to trigger the requirement of a three-fourths vote of the council. The argument of, of the applicant is that we should not exclude the right of way of the highway and the streets from that calculation. And therefore, only a, a majority vote is necessary to approve the zoning. As you know, the argument of the protesters is that we should exclude the streets from that calculation, the streets and highways. And when we do, they achieve the proper percentage. So unfortunately, there's no Oklahoma case law on point here. And both, both council, we have really able council on both sides. They have each pointed to authority from other jurisdictions. There's not much. And there is not the same language in the codes and the ordinances and the statutes in the other jurisdictions that are cited. So we more or less have to look, in my opinion, in, in the opinion of the legal department, to how we have calculated these percentages in the past. And we have always excluded the street right of way from the calculation. And you, you go with the principle of law that you look to, if there's any ambiguity in the wording of the provision, you have to look to the administrative practice of how, how they have administered the law over the years. And that's what's happened at Incog. And I don't know, Susan, do you have the map? I'm sorry, I don't have it with me. It's, it's in my, it's in my, my file. I can grab it or Susan can probably find it more easily. The language says in the zoning code and in our charter that a protest petition will be deemed valid if it's signed by the owners of fifty percent or more of the area of the lots within three hundred feet of the area included in the proposed zoning amendment. And if it meets the other regulations. So that's the wording. And it has been interpreted over the years not to include street right of way or highway right of way. And that would be, that would be our recommendation. However, I think it is ultimately, well, it's ultimately up to a court if it goes to court. But because the, the council is able to adopt regulations implementing the, the charter provision, which allows for this extra majority, more than majority vote, it seems logical to me that the council would make the decision as to the sufficiency of the protest.
If you could stay, I may have some questions for you. And, and I asked this question earlier when we discussed this, but I just wanted to clarify here for the public. It would not be, we would not, we would assume that ODOT or other public entities would not respond. It would not, I mean, it's not a, something that they have done or would do, to our knowledge. I mean, they wouldn't sign it before or against on petition for right of way, so.
I think it would be unusual, but I've never attempted to get ODOT's decision one way or the other. And I don't know if that's done in this case.
Do we have any other questions for her?
I have a question. Oh, there's, there's the map. But that's the one that you have.
Is it for, for Janine?
Well, I, I have it. If you want to look at it, I'll go grab it out of my file. So, Janine, David Adams.
Yeah, I'm sorry, David Adams.
Oh, sorry.
I have a question about the percentage. Since we only ate that was denied. What would that percentage, would it still be seven?
Yes, because it has to be three-fourths, there it is. Where's the map? Three-fourths of the entirety of the council.
Now, before we continue, someone has to say yeah. I don't, sorry.
Pardon me?
Even though someone's asked.
That's right.
Yes, it has to be, it has to be seven.
The entire membership of the council.
Vote when that person is here.
It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't really change, yeah.
Who can recall a vote?
Anyone who voted on the prevailing side.
So does seven votes count as prevailing?
See, that seems like a simple question.
I know, it does. No, I, I get where you're coming from, but I think that, yes, I think the prevailing side in this was, I'm, I'm going to go out on a limb here and say I think it would be a yes.
A yes.
Wouldn't you think it'd be a yes? Oh, well, you get two different answers from them.
How long did you go to law school? I expected something more than that.
We didn't expect that question, so.
Right, sorry not to have that.
So do we think that, is that a yes to Counselor Ewing's question, that, that they, a yes vote could withdraw? I'm sorry, I'm confused. Counselor, Counselor Patrick has a question or comment here, so let's get that in while we all think.
Okay, while, while people are pondering on that, back many years ago, we had a specific situation, same way about the F and M back in seventy first. And it had challenges in the same way. And part of the challenge, and it ended up the court, district court figured this out. Because the challenge there was determination of fifty percent of landowners or fifty percent of the land mass. And it ended up going to court and I can't remember how it come out. But if you take fifty percent of landowners and knock fifty percent of mass, you've got a different story here.
Right. I, I, I think, I actually was involved in that case and I.
Well, I was too, but I still can't remember.
Do you know what the determining factor in that case was? It was that we didn't have a provision in our charter that allowed, or that, that required this majority, more than majority vote in case of a protest. It was in the zoning ordinance, but it wasn't in the charter. And the charter had a majority vote requirement on all votes. And so the court, it was really an interesting case and it went up on appeal and the court held that the charter prevailed and we made a charter amendment. So that's, we, we have charter amendment now that says, in case of a protest of, of that land area.
So if we go along with our, our charter and our past history, they're heading to court to figure this out. That's the only adoption that happens.
Sorry, I.
Because our hands are basically, what you're telling us, our hands are basically tied unless we're voting.
I'm, right.
Because if, if it reaches seven, if you're hearing that it requires that amount because of the, the land and.
That's right. Now, you, if, you know, if you, that, that would be our recommendation. I think you guys need to probably make the call on whether the protest petition is sufficient. But as to whether there can be a reopening of the vote or a motion to reconsider and who can make that, we'll have to research it, but the good news is you can make that motion at the next meeting.
Right.
So, so that will give us an opportunity to, to do a little research, since you heard two different answers from your attorneys.
So, but Mr. Omealia or whoever feels qualified to answer this. Do we, do we then need to rule on or vote on the validity, validity of the appeal tonight? Or would we, because my understanding from our conversation earlier is that that would be our next step tonight, would be that we would then determine if we thought that this required the seven, the super majority or a simple majority. Or is, is your thought that we still need to make that determination tonight regardless of whether or not we reopen the vote?
I think you could do it either way, frankly. Because if, if you do reopen the vote and there, the seven votes are achieved, then you're back to, it's moot.
I, I, I guess I'm a little uncomfortable without some more resolution tonight because what then is to say that it comes back or that we, we haven't addressed any of this. I feel like everybody completely hanging unless we are somehow saying that something is coming back. If we don't address either of those tonight, I don't know how anybody knows how to proceed. Because my, I, I'll just say, based on our conversation and your recommendation, I believe it requires the seven votes. So if we were to, to tonight decide you think the appeal is valid, I think it is valid based on common sense and past, how, how the city is interpreting in the past. And it does seem to me that it is completely common sense that you would not expect ODOT right of way to be signing the property thing in the same way we wouldn't expect city. And as we discussed, I mean, if this were on a quarter, you could have somebody that is completely surrounded, you know, that it would be impossible to get signatures. And clearly, that's not the intent of the charter or the zoning code. We make it impossible for people to do that even if everybody around them opposed it. So, anyway, I don't know, I mean, I, I'm a little unclear now as to what our options are, Mr. Omealia. Could you advise us as to sort of what the paths forward there are that do not leave everybody here hanging without any sense of what, what was done?
Well, I think your, your options are is to, to take a vote to either approve the protest or deny the protest. And, or just don't take a vote. And that will leave it up, that leaves it up in the air for now, which is, it sounds like not what.
Sounds like.
Not what I would like.
Attorney. May I suggest something?
Yes, please, Counselor.
I don't know if Robert's rules of order really govern our affairs or not, but they seem to be pretty clear. Unless I'm missing something, that if there is a motion to reconsider, that it needs to be made during this meeting.
Counselor, Counselor will give us an opportunity at the next meeting.
at the next meeting.
Counselor rules are different.
Yes, sir.
So, does it need to be at the next meeting, or could it be tonight? Is there a reason why if somebody wants to-
Well, I would say, from, from my standpoint, now, knowing what we just heard from Jenny, I wish, and it's not your fault, I'm not blaming you, it's just a circumstance, I wish we would have had the conversation with you prior to taking the vote, it would have, would have helped to set the parameters of what and why, and, um, I don't think it would have changed anything here tonight, but it could, it could have, but it would have, I don't know, maybe it was just the, the order was wrong. I, I think it'd be smarter to go away from tonight, knowing if we're going to reconsider or not.
Right.
Um, it is difficult to know who's on the prevailing side, because it really does determine, it, it depends on whether or not only a majority was needed or seven were really needed. So, I don't know, it feels like we can move to reconsider, and if people want to reconsider, then it's another down, majority, majority vote, and then we know what we're giving two weeks from now.
Can we just do that?
Well, I thought the problem was we don't know who's the prevailing side.
But if, if, if at least one person from each side would say, could we, I mean, what do we?
Yeah, if one person from each side, one yes and one no, move each for a second.
I mean, I think it's probably beneficial to everybody if we resolve this question of the appeal, or-
Well, it's really not, it's the protest.
Right. It's the protest that's been objected to.
Protest. So, what does that take now? Does it take, we had two no votes.
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Kimbrough, Counselor Hall Harper voted no.
So, I, I forgot what it is we're asking to do here, so we, but if one of them and one of the yeses agreed that we want to reconsider, are we going to pull this vote tonight and then, and then decide the appeal, or just pull the vote and wait?
Both or against, it's different than last time.
Okay. Yes, I'm looking at you, Counselor.
As a representative of the no votes, and I move that we reconsider this vote at the next council meeting.
And can someone on the yes side, who won seconded, and is-
I don't want to leave it hanging, I think this-
I believe it.
As, as the yes, I would second Counselor Kimbrough's motion.
So, so, let's just make sure before we vote.
Look, let me repeat the motion as I understand what you would have here. The motion is to reconsider this at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Yes, sir. I'm, so, Counselor Kimbrough has a second.
Are we-
Is everyone going to be here two weeks from now?
I, yes. Yes, we've already, so, right, before we vote on that, we are not resolving then the appeal issue. Do we need to try to resolve that tonight, or, or at some, I mean, or I don't want to do this again and then go through a vote next time and then go, okay, now are we going to resolve the appeal issue? So, how do we want to approach that?
Regardless, we should resolve all the past issues. My, my preference would be to resolve it before we take a vote next, at the next meeting.
Okay. So, we'll put that up, let's bring it back, put that on the, so we'll resolve the appeal issue first, then, um, and this is on the September thirteenth meeting, if this passes, that would be what we would do, correct? Everybody agree what we're voting on?
Yeah.
We're still on the same issue from when you left a long time ago, Mayor Biden.
And, and Madam Chair, if we can, if we can bring it into the committee for discussion, so when we get down here, we know exactly what we're voting on with respect to this, this map and the right-of-way included or excluded.
Okay. All right. So, the, the motion is to bring, okay, Counselor.
The applicant needs to know if they need to be prepared to re-present, and if another grievance needs to be made, it's also prior to, to vote, for the counselor who's not here.
Curious, what, what are we doing on the third? Are you just, are you just voting, or are we?
We, we will bring it back on committee for discussion again, to discuss the map of the protest, and then we will bring it back to the council, need the six o'clock meeting for, for our vote. If we, but we first have to go through the motion of voting on the motion that Counselor Kimbrough and I just-
Right, so that could still fill, and then it's even here, so let's go ahead and vote on this. Keith.
Okay. Counselor Kimbrough.
And then we'll tell you what we think it means.
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper.
Yes.
Counselor Q. Counselor Patrick.
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert.
Yes.
Counselor America.
Yes.
Counselor Laken.
Yes.
Um, so, the item, that is not item five D, is the item that we just added to five D, has been approved, which means this will come back, we'll have committee with a focus on the appeal process and that issue, uh, discussion, and then on the thirteenth, we'll resolve that issue first, uh, what, if we are requiring those seven votes or just a majority on this issue, and then we'll re-vote after that decision's been made. I'm sorry?
Okay, I, I was thinking we might do this next time, but this is Bob's suggestion, I think it's a good one, Bob Edness, he said, go ahead and have a motion the other way as well, so that we've got the motion made by the-
Move to reconsider on September the fifteenth.
Second.
Item five D.
And then-
It needs to be-
Seconded by a no?
Seconded by a no.
Seconded. Uh, okay, and you, did you, what date did you say?
I don't know, maybe it's not the next day.
Right, I just wanted, the, the next meeting, September thirteenth. Okay. Yes, okay, so thirteenth, please. Please call the vote.
Counselor America, I'm sorry, what is the motion?
It's basically the exact same motion, but it is, we're going to do it twice.
Okay, thank you. I understand.
It's extra nice.
Okay, so our motion to reconsider this time is Counselor Laken.
Laken, seconded.
Moved, and Kimbrough seconded.
So, we have many yeses and a no. Possible cover.
Thank you. Counselor Kimbrough.
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper.
Yes.
Counselor Q.
Yes.
Counselor Patrick.
Yes.
Counselor Ewing.
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert.
Yes.
Counselor America.
Yes.
Counselor Laken.
Yes.
Should we have the mayor make a motion?
Hey, get off the candy crush over there, Mayor Biden. Uh, the motion is approved. Item six, ordinances first reading. A, ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen budget to make supplemental appropriations of one hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty cents from revenues received within the non-grant miscellaneous special revenue fund. B, ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen budget to make supplemental appropriations of sixteen thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents from the Oklahoma Office of Homeland Security to be received within the Department of Homeland Security miscellaneous grants fund. C, ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen budget to reduce appropriations of forty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars originally from revenues received within the non-grant miscellaneous special revenue fund. D, ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen budget to make supplemental appropriations of two hundred and eight thousand dollars from recognizing unappropriated fund balance within the short-term capital fund. E was pulled. F, ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen budget to transfer unaccompanied unspended appropriation balances of fourteen million two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars between project centers and councils and two thousand fourteen sales tax fund. G, ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen budget to make supplemental appropriations of twenty-one million seven hundred and twenty-five dollars from a transfer to receive from the TMUA sewer operating fund within the two thousand seventeen OWRB bond fund. H, ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen budget to make supplemental appropriations of twenty-one million seven hundred and twenty-five dollars from no-ebony bond proceeds to be received within the TMUA sewer operating fund, instead of appropriations to then be transferred to the, to, um, two thousand seventeen OWRB bond fund. I, ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen budget to make supplemental appropriations of thirteen thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-four cents from recognizing unappropriated fund balance within the general fund. J, ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen budget to make supplemental appropriations of thirteen thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-four cents from recognizing unappropriated fund balance within the stormwater management enterprise fund. K, ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen budget to make supplemental appropriations of forty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixteen cents from recognizing unappropriated fund balance within the TMUA water operating fund. L, ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen budget to make supplemental appropriations of forty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixteen cents from recognizing unappropriated fund balance within the TMUA sewer operating fund. M, ordinance amending Title twenty-seven, Chapter twenty-two, Section two-two-zero-eight, Tulsa Revised Ordinances Concerning the Use of Tobacco and Favorite Products on All City Property Except Streets and Sidelocks Setting Out Definitions and Establishing Penalties and Enforcement. N, an ordinance amending Title thirty-six, Tulsa Revised Ordinances Taxi Cabs, Paratransit Vehicles, and Utility Vehicles for Hire, Chapter one, entitled Taxi Cab, Paratransit Vehicle, and Utility Vehicles for Hire Regulations, amending Section one-zero-one, entitled Definitions to Include Antique Classic or Special Interest Vehicle for Hire as Another Category Considered to be Paratransit Vehicles and Regulated as Paratransit Vehicles and Not as Taxi Cabs, amending Section one through six to Antique Classic and Special Interest Vehicles for Hire from Age Limitations imposed on Other Vehicles Regulated by this ordinance. O, ordinance accepting and approving the terms and conditions of the Trust and Denture Creating the Tulsa International Airport Development Trust and authorizing the acceptance of the Beneficial Interest in the Trust by the execution of the Trust and Denture with the emergency clause. Without objections, item six A through six O will be forwarded to the next council meeting. P, ordinance amending rezoning ordinance two-three-seven-five-zero, rezoning case Z-seven-three-nine-seven property located at the northeast corner of West Hundred First Street South, South Elwood Avenue from AGIL to CG with optional development plan, correcting an omission in ordinance two-three-seven-five-zero, is approved by council on August second, two thousand seventeen, waiver of charter provisions and council rules and passage on first reading requested with the emergency clause. Are there any speakers?
We have those speakers.
Is there council discussion?
Move for approval, um, yeah, well, it's P, six P. And by waiving the charter rules and passage on first reading with the emergency clause.
Keith, please call the roll.
Counselor Kimbrough.
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper.
Yes.
Counselor Q.
Yes.
Counselor Patrick.
Yes.
Counselor Ewing.
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert.
Yes.
Counselor America.
Yes.
Counselor Laken.
Yes.
Item six P is approved with waiver of the charter provisions and council rules and the emergency clause. Seven, ordinance with second reading. A, ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen budget to make supplemental appropriations of thirty-four thousand forty-nine dollars and nine cents from U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to be received within the two thousand one five-year sales tax fund. Are there any speakers?
We have those speakers.
Is there council discussion?
Move for approval of seven A.
Keith, please call the roll.
Counselor Kimbrough.
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper.
Yes.
Counselor Q.
Yes.
Counselor Patrick.
Yes.
Counselor Ewing.
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert.
Yes.
Counselor America.
Yes.
Counselor Laken.
Yes.
Item seven A is approved. We are up to seven B, and before I go into the, to reading all of this, there's going to be kind of a little technical thing here as a reminder to everybody, we were, when we continued the last meeting, we, we had a motion to amend on the table that had been moved and seconded, uh, which would mean we are in the council discussion stage of discussing that amendment solely, uh, and we would not have a discussion at that point. If we are, as we, we discussed earlier in our committee meeting, in order to get to, we know there are a lot of people here who want to speak, in order to sort of technically get to the portion where we can, I can ask that we waive council rules, because we closed public discussion last time, but to even get to that stage, we need to get this motion off the table.
So, Chair, I recommend that we pull this, withdraw this item.
And the motion from last time was Counselor Hall Harper, seconded by Counselor Ewing.
I agree to the withdrawal.
Okay. So, that moves us back into discussion on item seven B. Yes.
You guys want to stand up for a second?
Yeah. He can get to it. I had to crawl in there like that.
Hey, you're going to take a breathing?
All right. Well, that's over. We, we actually, they have a technical thing they need to do to change DVDs since it's
Excuse me.
a long meeting, so you have about five minutes, and we're going to go ahead and take this opportunity to do this.
Yeah, let's go. Twenty-four people. Three against, so twenty-seven total. And a three isn't a big deal, but it feels like it. So, and here's the funny thing about like council rules, is they can take the rules, but, uh- Have you talked earlier? I think so, yeah, 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 but, but, but there's also a maximum on each side, it's thirty minutes. Now, they can break that, they did last time, but, so the interesting thing about those three people, though, is each of them can talk for five minutes, which means that there's like automatic, that's what that goes to whenever they land in twenty-four, maybe there are two hours or fifteen, I don't know.
I'm going to punch you. But you're wearing glasses.
Punch me.
So, I'm not going to punch you. No, be, no, because now-
Let me go home.
Because you'll go to the bathroom, you'll stick up your clothes, and Superman, he can kill you or something.
Nude, Superman? I'm nude?
No, I know you got your little suit, your tie, and a little this one.
Suit and tie, I mean, you're as tired as I am.
You can see that.
We're going to go ahead and take a couple of minutes, so you can keep chattering. We, we actually, they have a technical thing they need to do to change DVDs since it's a long meeting, so you have about five minutes, and we're going to go ahead and take this opportunity to do this.
Yeah, let's go. It's going to have 24 people.
24 people?
Twenty-four people for, three against, so 27 total. Another three isn't a big deal, but it feels like it.
So the four are the ones that were just shut off.
So, and here's the funny thing about like council rules is, and they can take the rules, but. I think so, yeah, 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 but, but, but there's also a maximum of each side is 30 minutes. Now, they can break that, they did last time, but, so the interesting thing about those three people though, is each of them could talk for five minutes, which means that there's like automatic, that goes to whatever they land in 24, maybe two hours or fifteen, I don't know.
I'm going to punch you.
I.
But you're wearing glasses.
Punch me.
So I'm not going to punch you. No, no, because now.
Let me go home.
Because you'll go to the bathroom, you'll stick your fucking clothes in Superman, he can kill you or something.
Nude Superman? I'm nude?
No, I know you got your little suit, you're tired.
Suit and tie, I mean, you're as tired as I am.
You can say that.
Yeah. I know it. Say what? Oh, electric.
Oh, yeah. There's that, somebody's personal net.
Still red. I'm only 20 percent. At least let me check. Oh, yeah, Dad's here. I don't know. It's green. Huh? Yeah.
Want a piece of gum? Want a piece of gum too?
Yeah, but you said it.
I already ate my carrot, some blueberries.
That's super healthy.
I tried to work weird hours, so. Channel six. Well, that was a fun one, huh? Yeah. I texted America earlier and just said how late you think it's going to be, way late.
People were saying, already 8:30, but people were saying 11. That's the maiden number.
Well, there's 27 speakers cut off for our next one. Well, is it that they can't speak again, or are they just not allowed to go beyond whatever time they have left at all? Oh, okay.
So they put out a call for.
Well, there you go, you're going to have 27. Except for the three, they get fined.
So how many, what, there's, you know how many there are?
We heard 24, I mean, wait, three against, so 24 for. Oh, my God.
Hey, guys.
Always come back.
About to start, about to start. Friends.
Just pull one of those chairs.
Grab seats, about to start.
Oh, I know.
Just put that button on top.
Welcome back. We are rejoining our meeting tonight, our scheduled meeting. We are on Item 7B. I'm going to read the item first, and then we're going to talk about how we're going to talk about it. Ordinance declaring a 180-day moratorium on the acceptance of applications for processing of and issuance of building permits or certificates of occupancy that would allow construction on or use of property for certain retail sales of convenience goods or consumer shopping goods herein described as a small box discount store, initiating an amendment of the Tulsa Zoni Code to provide for appropriate dispersal of small box discount stores, providing an appeal process, providing effective and repeal dates, providing severability with the emergency clause. As I mentioned, we, we are officially out of the public comment section, but we, I indicated last time that my intent was to ask the council to reopen public discussion to allow people who did not speak last time an opportunity to speak. I'm going to go ahead and read, and I may not read my whole, they give me this long script of, of things, I'll, I'll skim through some of this, and then we'll talk about how we will proceed on this. And I feel bad because they wrote me like two pages of stuff here, and it was all very well done, guys, but we know, obviously, there's a lot of interest. We had a lot of emotion last time, but for the most part, I think it was, it was a well, you know, people behaved well and treated each other with respect. We want to see that again tonight. Our normal procedures and how, first of all, and I said this earlier, and I think everybody spoke last time, you can't speak this time. When you're speaking, please speak to the council as much as possible. I mean, this isn't, it isn't here. I know, we're, we're all excited to be on Facebook Live and the media and all of that, but, you know, this is, this is a council meeting, and so let's try to have the conversation between us if we can. We do expect everybody to, like we did last time, to remain courteous and respectful of each other, you know, whatever their positions are. I, I hope we don't have to get to, if we did, if we had people who were, who were stopping others from speaking or being disrespectful to other speakers or to counselors and things like that, I mean, we would have to involve security. We haven't had to do that before, I don't think we would tonight, but our normal procedure, and we'll probably have a variation of that tonight, is that each speaker, you guys have heard this on some of the earlier things, you're limited to five minutes a person and 30 minutes a side. My understanding is, Alicia, correct me, did you tell me 21 speakers had signed up to speak in favor of the moratorium and three against, is that right?
That's correct.
So if we, when we go to this stage, well, first, let me just say, if, if the council, do we have consensus from the council that we do want to reopen the public comment and allow additional speakers to speak? So is anyone?
Men to reopen public comment.
I think you can do that.
Yeah, without objection, so if there is no objection. So I think the issue will be, we would like to, you know, last night, last time we tried to let it go as long as possible, I think we would like to, for one thing, we have at least one counselor who may have to leave early, and we'd like all of the counselors to be here and participate in this. So if we could, you know, under the normal rules, you would be limited to 30 minutes per side. We did, we relaxed those last time to try to make sure we got everybody a chance to speak. We'd like to do that again, and we'd like to do that, but that would mean kind of voluntarily limiting each of those speakers to, to a smaller amount. And I think what we would like to avoid also, to try to keep to a reasonable timeline on the whole, is to not continue to ask questions of each speaker to go beyond that. So if we set a time limit on the entire, if it's not 30 minutes another time, if one speaker stays up here for 10 minutes, that means, you know, at some point, we're going to hit the end of that time. So is there a sense among the council of how you would like to proceed in terms of time management as we go forward?
Chair.
Yes, Counselor Patrick.
At our normal rules, it would allow each speaker about a minute and a half to speak on the four side. So I would think if people adhere to like three minutes apiece, we could get to this in a reasonable time and let them, allow them to speak their piece.
So that would be about one hour?
That would be about one hour on the four side, and of course, the against side is, is I think one, three, three down.
Right, so that's a kind of move, because that's under the 30 minutes. So if we were to do that, I mean, and Counselor Patrick can still give times, but then that would, rather than sort of saying, you know, we'll, we'll go to that full hour, so if early speakers end up taking away more of that time, it means we could run out of speakers, so, so it sort of requires some mutual courtesy amongst those who are speaking. Is that agreement with the counselors up here?
Yeah.
Okay, so Counselor Patrick, will, you want to give warning at two minutes?
Give, um, warning at two minutes that they have one.
And if you go beyond, and you may have questions, whatever, but just keep in mind, if you take additional time, if you're an early speaker, it means that there's a later speaker who may not get to speak, or who may get 30 seconds and, and act accordingly. Okay?
There's also no requirement to use the entirety of a lot of time.
That is a very good, a very good point. I try to remember to always say up to, up to, so anybody who wants to do like our earlier speaker on the Zoni case and say ditto like him, you're, you're our faves. So, okay, Alicia, if you want to, and she'll call the first, whoever's up next, and then the second, so if you know you're up next, you might want to go ahead and move up, since we've got a lot to move through tonight. Alicia, call the first speaker, please.
Our first speaker is Precious Ross, followed by Terry McGee. Hello, I'm Precious Ross. Growing up, I was always taught that life is what you make it. You are responsible for your own success as well as the good that you create through life. After attending the last council meeting, I realized that this is all a lie. There are people who vote on my standard of living, whether it is helpful or, as in this case, harmful. I also witnessed how discriminatory the process is after Counselor Ewing asked why this moratorium is any different from others. From the outside looking in, it appears to be blatant discrimination. What shocked me more than anything was when I heard that these stores could potentially begin serving liquor in 2018. That could potentially mean a total of 21 liquor stores from Pine to 64th Street North, including five pre-existing liquor stores. I am 25 years old and part of a generation of young people that are already bombarded with negative destructive advertisement and products. Since 2013, there has been a 70 percent increase in African-American children who have been misdiagnosed as being ADHD. One of the major causes of ADHD diagnosis in poor communities is dietary, not mental. I can personally tell you that the average breakfast for most people in these food desert locations is more than likely not some gluten-free oatmeal or organic cocoa puffs, but some diet-filled cereal or offering dycolored fruit flavored roll-up, not to mention the bright colored juices that are in no way natural, which are purchased in abundance at all $15 dollar store locations. Often times, these diet-filled products become breakfast, lunch, and dinner. Depending on your resources, you may not have access to healthier food. Here's what really boggles my mind. In 2009, the UK banned certain food dyes such as green number three.
You have one minute.
Which produces organ tumors and red number three, which produces thyroid damage. Red number 40, yellow five, and yellow six have all been known in some cases to cause severe hypersensitivity reactions as well as hyperactivity disorder in children, also known as ADHD. And also yellow six, as well as a host of other dyes, have been linked back to cancer. I am doing my part in educating consumers in my district as most are unaware as I was. My hope is that in your awareness, you will be part of the cause for change. Considering that I have negative expectations as it relates to that, I will close by saying to my community, if we get a majority note vote, I don't think we should simply boycott the dollar stores. I think we should and must boycott every district that gave us a note vote, since we spend the majority of our money outside our community. Thank you.
Hard to follow that speech. Greetings, everyone, counselors. My name's Terry McGee. I'm a builder, developer, and entrepreneur. Some of you I know from my past experiences as the HUD chair and co-chair. Counselor Q, I need to apologize to you. I wrote you a letter and I called you Doyle Hall. I swear to God, I wouldn't be back here at the age of 60 years old preaching some of these same sermons. So some of my memory goes beyond today to think back to then. But I did write you a letter, and I want to share that letter with the rest of you guys, if you'll give me a moment. Some of my comments are based on me, some of my past experience as being a firefighter. Those are my two brothers at the door, although they're a lot handsomer than I am. I maintain a real estate license. I've been the HUD chair, the vice chair, I was the 2-on-1 advisory chair for seven years, and I've also been a member of NTT in the past. past, which is the North Tulsa Economic Development Initiative. Dear councillors, after reviewing the issue of District One being saturated with not only dollar store models, but salvage yards, chemical companies, landfills, social programs, halfway homes, and other businesses of the sort that either don't pay taxes, don't hire several employees, and so forth, I've gone before the planning commission on several times to speak against these type unhealthy facilities. I was here not long ago on the corner of Apache and Lewis, where a company wanted to put another recycle center. They slipped up and bought the property next to me in anticipation they'd be able to buy mine, but instead, I told them I wanted to take it back to the community, they snatched the permit and said, "We won't do nothing and just let the grass grow up fifteen feet tall." That's on the way to get on Seventy-Five Highway, right off of Lewis. While opposing these type businesses, I got involved in community gardening, while involving community gardening, I'm thinking, "Wow, while we're waiting on the store to come, we'll work on community gardening." While I'm waiting during that period, they built Highway Seventy-Five Eleven, or Highway Eleven. Overnight, it seems, they built a Dollar General at Forty-Five Twenty-Three North Peoria Avenue, they built another at Twenty-Eight, another type store at Twenty-Eight Eleven North Peoria. I purchased the land to the south of Tulsa Community College, and overnight, in anticipation again of economic development coming, well, my hopes are high. And this is all the land that's directly to the north of TCC, or to the south of TCC campus, north. Overnight, they built another Dollar General, Nineteen-O-Six North Harlem, and a family dollar at Twenty-Two Fifteen North Harlem. I may be out of sequence as to which came first, Highway Eleven or the dollar stores. I went on to talk to the Chamber of Commerce, the Metro Chamber. I noticed at the last meeting, when I watched on TV and prayed you guys didn't vote and carry it on today, do I need to stop now on my last?
But if you continue, just keep in mind, there's an hour total, so we are gonna end it at that hour.
I'll be quick and real brief. With these thoughts in mind, May 2017, I decided to seek other real estate options, and I'll just overdo this, but I went out south and thought, "Well, I'll take some of my funds as an investor and buy some property out south." So I bought two condominiums at Sixty-seven Thirty-Seven South Peoria, that's why I wrote you the letter, councillor Q. I sat down with the manager of the condominium complex, along with the homeowners association president, and said, "Look, I've got all this background, can I help you with anything?" They said, "Yes, please, don't let another dollar store come right next door to the complex across the street from the other one that already exists." Councillor Phil, I'm hoping you'll vote in favor of the moratorium, I understand that the Kaiser Foundation has invested, or made investments in the South Tulsa Community House. When you look at the poor population and the amount of people in need, that are in need of quality fruit, meats, and vegetables, I would think that the South Tulsa Community House as well would be voting in favor of this moratorium. And with that said, I'm gonna sit down, and I really appreciate your time. Mayor, councillor America, I appreciate you guys jumping in and helping me when I was working on that building permit for Bethel Seventh Ed Vanish Church, I was really proud the way the city jumped right on it, and to my councillor, I'm sorry, because she's a little upset I didn't come to her first. We've got an excellent councillor, and I'm really proud to be of support for her and her members today. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Precious Johnson, followed by Emily Polly.
Hello. Thank you for your time and attention, everyone. There must be without a doubt a certain luxury in being councillor over a district that has never had the concern that District One has. It must be such a privilege knowing that you represent a district that has more stability and economic potential than District One. Councillor Harper, I have so much respect for you knowing that no other person on this council will ever have the challenges nor the courage needed to represent the most undeserved, unprivileged, intentionally blighted district in this city. Daily, the citizens of District One are reminded that community resilience is a myth. We battle with poor education, joblessness, discrimination, and crime that all reinforce one another in these poor undeserved neighborhoods. We are placed in these, in this vicious cycle of poverty, inequality, isolation, and distress. There was a time when I was as disconnected as some of you may be, and I fell for the native, narrative that many of my white classmates also believed, the false belief that poor people of color make poor choices. However, being exposed to the more southern parts of District Two and Eight forced me to wake up from the illusion of inclusion and privilege that I was associated with for more than half of my life. I came to the overwhelming realization that the residents of District One don't make poor decisions, they simply have poor choices decided for them. Something, something my classmates and I, at the time, never even had to think about, to even suggest going to the dollar store would have had you socially exiled. You may reject this, you may reject that this racism, sorry, racism, classism, elitism, or whatever ism it is attached to, but it definitely speaks to your social consciousness if you believe that it is acceptable to have fifteen dollar stores in one entire district. I'm sure some of you have done great things for District One, and it is very appreciated, however, placing a Band-Aid on a gunshot wound is the same as watching and waiting for a community to bleed out. I know that some of you were highly offended at the idea that someone would insinuate that you are racist because you voted no over this moratorium. This community is equally offended that some think that we are anti-development because we are protesting for a higher standard of living and development in our community. A no vote from you is the same as protesting our desire for higher standards and quality of living. When a predominantly white city council has the power to make an imposing decision as it relates to a community that is predominantly occupied by people of color, that is power plus racism, no matter how you choose to label it, especially, especially when you are fully aware that this was intended for District One alone. It does not require a task force or a life disparity study to figure out that this is all by design. The only way to deny it is to vote yes. Thank you.
My name is Emily Polly, and I live in District Four. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'd really like to urge you in my few short remarks, that if you're considering voting against this moratorium, to really ask yourself why. If you're thinking to vote no because you think the moratorium will be ineffective, or you're afraid it might draw a lawsuit, then I believe you're missing the meaning of this vote. This vote is about who has the right to determine what will happen in the neighborhoods in which they live. If this were your neighborhood that was being voted on, your children's community, your property values at stake, would it really settle well with you if others outside your community were telling you that they knew better what should or should not happen in your neighborhood? I live in Midtown, a few years ago, a Persian rug store on Fifteenth Street was closing, and an owner of a car wash wanted to establish his business in place of it. Quite a few people in my neighborhood were up in arms about the idea, they worried it would cheapen the area, would increase traffic too much. A car wash didn't go in. More recently, there was a huge battle about whether or not a CVS should be built in, down the street. Many of the residents initially didn't want one at all, there were public meetings and smaller group discussions and all kinds of negotiating, and eventually, a compromise was reached that made sure the building wouldn't be too big, that it would match the look of the neighborhood. At no time did the chamber send us an email warning us that we could appear hostile towards business development in our community. We were not told we must do what CVS wants, or they might sue us. The residents of our district didn't have to come before the whole city council to request anything for their voice to be heard. And it's beginning to bet that very similar situations have come up in most of your districts. It's perfectly, it's a perfectly normal part of the democratic process and city development to work with the interests and concerns of those who live there. Let's not pretend that we always give business a blank check to do whatever they want in our neighborhoods. It doesn't happen in mine, and I'm pretty sure it doesn't happen in most of yours. This proposal is not unreasonable, it wouldn't have a negative impact on any other district, it calls for a moratorium, moratorium for less than six months, it only helps development of new small box discount stores within District One, and only in cases if they're too close to another one. If you enact this moratorium, will it be a useful step in bringing a much-needed grocery store to District One? Maybe, maybe not, but that's not what this vote is about. This vote is about whether the citizens of every district in Tulsa have an adequate voice in the decisions that affect their community. If you proceed with voting no on this proposal, you will have responsibility for the message you're sending to the citizens of North Tulsa and to the councillor, a message that says, "We think we know better than you what's best for your district." This vote isn't about whether you think this proposal is a good idea, it's about whether you think it's a good idea that citizens have a reasonable control over the decisions that affect their own communities. Thank you.
I'm gonna remind you that, if you want to use your time to clap, then that's but, but, clap while they're walking, because it's a total amount of time, so if you, if you delay the speaking, it's just less time for them to speak, quite fast.
Hi, my name is Rebecca McGrath, I'm a licensed clinical social worker, I've been working in the community for about ten years, not as long as councillor Hall Harper, I have extreme respect for the work that she's done, much longer than me, she's smarter than me, and she works harder than me, and when she throws her weight behind something, I know that it's for the best of the community. I did email councillor Kimbrough a couple months ago about this concern and asking him to support this as one of his constituents, and I was disappointed to get the response that I got with concerns about principles of fairness for the whole city, with fairness to businesses. And I don't think you can look in the face of a child that is hungry, which many are in the part of Tulsa that we're talking about, in North Tulsa, in District One, and say that we're worried about fairness to businesses. That's not the important factor here. The people of District One are saying, "We need more places where we can buy actual real food for our children and for our families." If it's about a fear of a lawsuit from a corporation, I can't buy that either, because we were just discussing an issue before about litigation about a storage facility. So, there's been special exceptions made for districts for river development, there's been special exceptions made for projects downtown, so telling us that it's because it's only for one district, I don't buy that either, I'm sorry. And I respectfully ask that, after spending the better part of two hours talking about things like quote-unquote "the tremendous need for self-storage facilities", about concerns about the view in South Tulsa, aesthetics, and now we're questioning people's ability to get food, I am a social worker in Tulsa, as I said, and I understand the depth and breadth of poverty and suffering that's experienced in District One on a level that I think many of you maybe don't, and you're lucky in some ways that you don't see that. But in some ways, you're unlucky, because you're making a really big mistake if you're not actively working on this. It is shameful of us as the city of Tulsa to allow this degree of poverty to occur. And we have a long history of systematic oppression and violence in our city, let's be real about that, and let's start to do better as a city. Where there is a will, there is a way, we can do better.
Next speaker, please. Maria Monday, followed by Stanford Pate.
Can you repeat the names? Yeah, who was the first one?
Demaria Monday, followed by Stanford Pate.
But if you're the next one, go ahead and come on up, so you're ready and...
Hello, I'm Demaria Monday, and I live in District One, and I stand here today with my child, because I am fighting for his future. So I ask the question, why? Why do we need a sixteen-dollar store in our neighborhood? There's an obvious cognitive dissonance about the needs of North Tulsa. What we need is sustainable economic development, what we need are grocery stores to address the food scarcity in our neighborhood, what we need is access to fresh fruits and vegetables to diminish the life expectancy gap. The access to fresh fruit and vegetable is not and should not be a privilege afforded to some. The disparity of development in North Tulsa and the surrounding areas is evident to all, and it's disheartening. It is the city's responsibility to develop a viable community in which all citizens can thrive. And another dollar store is not the solution. The possibility of liquor and wine and beer being sold in the dollar stores in our neighborhood in 2018 need not go into explanation of all the detrimental factors that that can bring, whether it's more violence, whether it's more DUIs, whether it's a higher alcoholism rate, all of those, is all to the destruction of our community, and what we need is help in the reconstruction of North Tulsa. And so today, I come to you and I urge you to do your job, it's your responsibility to help build our community. Don't leave us out. It's our right, we're citizens, and we pay tax dollars. And as you look at my child, know that his future is bright, and I believe in it. And I urge you to vote yes to the moratorium. Do your job, and, and do right for all of the citizens, not just some. Thank you.
Next speaker, Stanford Pate, followed by Xavier Doolittle.
My name is Stanford Pate, I live on Roswell Hill, and I know the city council has policies and procedures that you all follow, and I know you have a certain rule, broad or whatever you call it, but to have these people wait for two and a half hours to tell you what their needs are, you have families here who need to be with their children at home, they are paying for babysitters to come down here, and you listen to a couple of multimillion-dollar corporations arguing over it. There's some way you should be able to fast-track these people's needs and have them get up here and stand and speak, so that they can get back to their families. Now, with that said, sixty-seven percent of all dollar stores reside within District One, eighty-one percent of all family dollar stores reside within District One, we need a grocery store where we can buy groceries and vegetables.
And just, I don't want to argue, but that's not accurate. It is. Well, and not, and we can go into, we can put a map up here, but one, and we should have clarified that last time, because we keep hearing fifteen in District One, and that wasn't, and I hope, that's not what councillor Hall Harper said either, that was, it's in, it's in, it's in a couple of districts. Listen, I'm not, and I'm not arguing the, I just want to explain the numbers, the facts, I'm not arguing if it's too many or not, but, but we, but it's just a misunderstanding, and I just want to, that's not what councillor Hall Harper said either, so I just, it's not fifteen in one district, I think there, we've got a map we can put up on and show you where they all are.
My name is Xavier Doolittle, I am a member of this community.
We're reclaiming our time, right?
No, this isn't part of your time, the yellow part is, so stop, let him go.
My name is Xavier Doolittle, I am resident for most of my life here in Tulsa, in South Tulsa. I've lived apart from North Tulsa all my life, to the point where when I went to visit, it felt like a completely different other city. And when I realized that, no, I blame myself the most, because it was my ignorance, my standing by when I should have been a neighbor to those people, and to realize that I have basically not even thought of what goes out on my border. And when I come up here today, really, I came up and I researched a whole bunch of numbers about the different busy streets and that we should be investing in local business, and why outlet stores are just a destructive, parasitic force in our community, but you know what? Councillor Lakin, I know that you are a business leader, and I know you already know the facts, you already know how business works, and you know that when these come into their community, only a third, at most, of what they make was actually back into the community. What they are putting out is going in a corporate upward chain all across the nation, not here in the local community. If we want to invest in our community, if we want to rebuild and create one Tulsa, we need to invest as a community. Now, this moratorium, as far as I'm concerned, is just a state of execution. It's a hundred and eighty days, and we absolutely need it, we need to talk, and we need absolute, absolute action, not just reaction. Now, there are many communities all across the nation who, in response to outlet stores targeting their marginal communities, have created a regional commission and worked together with local community leaders, as well as elected officials, to decide... as well as elected officials to decide on what can be done and to create an appeals process for when these people try to come in and establish themselves. A co-op or a grocery store, whatever the case may be, I look to each and every one of you here on the council outside of District One to come up with a solution. Do more than just react. I'm not asking you here just to vote yes. I'm asking you to make a difference and to actually come up with a plan. Because as far as I'm concerned, District One has done more than enough work. They've come out here and they've cried their eyes out. They've given their heart away to you. They live through it every day. It is upon all of us everywhere else in Tulsa to be a neighbor. And you know what? A neighbor has no legal, you know, as far as you can come up and say, just like they did last time, that you should do a boycott, you should look to your local community. You know, a neighbor can look at what else is going on over there and just say, "It's not my problem." You can do that. There is no legal obligation for you to do something. But if you do nothing, you're responsible for what happens next.
Could you repeat it while they're coming up, Alicia? I couldn't hear the first one.
Miguel Vaughn, followed by Charles Wilks.
Hey, if you're on deck, you might want to just go ahead and scoot up to the wall up there for your turn to say this quick here. I'm not giving up time.
Thank you, everybody, for coming to address the conference. My name is Michael Vaughn, and I'm a native of Tulsa. And I'm a resident of District One. I'm proud to say that I chose as an adult to make Tulsa my home after living almost 10 years in Japan. I would like to state also that I am in support of the moratorium on new discount dollar store developments in North Tulsa. There are some among you who will reject the idea of a moratorium out of hand at business and anti-development. My community basically needs economic development and I certainly don't want to do anything that hinders that. However, we do as a city have a longstanding public policy of discouraging business developments and activities that go against the vicious values and long-term economic prospects of our communities. And our desperate need for economic growth, we cannot continue to allow developments which exclude the poor, staff, economic resources for our communities with no reinvestment in the community and go against the long-term prospects of the community. Furthermore, neither the State Able Commission nor the City Zoning Commission can definitively address the legitimate concern of the community that these dollar store, discount dollar stores will be able to sell strong beer and wine exempt of the 300-foot rule. There are some stores that are already there that might be able to sell and they're right next to a church or a school. That has not been addressed. That has not been investigated. Neither the State Able Commission nor the City Zoning Commission can definitively adjust the number of beer and wine vendors allowable in any one geographic area. So that means that in the near future, North Tulsa could have an additional dozen new outlets selling beer and wine. Many studies already exist showing, many studies already exist showing a correlation between crime and negative health outcomes and the number of liquor stores and beer outlets, beer and wine outlets in the community. We talked before about the life expectancy gap in North Tulsa and South Tulsa. There have been many efforts to identify the causes and close that gap. More beer and wine outlets in the community goes against that. The last city council meeting, we talked about racism. Some of you were accused of being racist. I can't say that. I don't know your hearts. I'm not accusing anybody of being a racist. But what I will say is that there are decisions being made here today that create and perpetuate inequalities in North Tulsa. I ask each of you to carefully weigh your decision here today. I ask that you clearly, that you hear the will of the people of this community. And I ask that you reconsider your objections to the moratorium, allowing for a period of thoughtful consideration very quickly. I ask that you allow for a period of thoughtful consideration of the long-term economic and health impact of dollar stores in North Tulsa. Thank you.
Good evening. We've heard multiple arguments for why the moratorium is needed. We know about the life expectancy gap. You said life. Oh, Charles Wilks, sorry. Good evening. We've heard multiple arguments for why the moratorium is needed. We know about the life expectancy gap. We know about the processed foods. We also know about the lack of diverse development in North Tulsa. But I'd like to talk about the unspoken perception of value in Tulsa. When my wife and I lived in 71st and Memorial, the perception was that we had arrived even though we lived in cheap and terrible apartments. But when we moved to North Tulsa, the perception was negative even though we lived in an 11-year-old house, a three-bedroom, two-bath, and a nice garage. For too long, our community has suffered from irresponsible leadership, ulterior motives, and ultimately others benefiting off the struggles of our community. We've lost way more than we've gained in that time. But you know what? The funny thing is, North Tulsa isn't even the so-called poor. It's part of Tulsa. It's not the most crime-ridden. It's not the most abandoned. But it is the most disenfranchised and picked on. We ask, we're asking just to be valued. At the end of the day, all of this is about value. I know about the possible lawsuit, but how much are our citizens worth? Are we worth economic development? Are we worth good schools? Are we worth living more in the life expectancy gap of 10 years? Or are we worth just a bunch of dollar stores? We're not looking for more false promises. We need real plans with the community in mind. So much has done, been done to North Tulsa, but not for and with North Tulsa. At the end of the day, I ask the question, are we valued or are we cheap like dollar stores? I'd like to end with a quote by Horatio Jones. Believe it or not, providing your worth means leaving people who won't appreciate it the hell alone. How can you prove your worth more by stressing yourself settling for less? They see your worth. They just don't value it. Thank you.
The speakers come up. Could you go ahead and repeat your name to the mic when you start just so Counselor Patrick can get it down correctly? And the next speaker?
Paige Gilliland, followed by Reverend Jeanette P. Marshall.
Hello, my name is Paige Gilliland. Again, that is Paige Gilliland. So I have something to say in regards to everything that I see is going on. And the main thing, when I thought to myself, what comes to mind when I have something to say, is actions speak louder than words. You guys say you care, but the body language, the comments, it doesn't match up. You want us to trust you and you want us to give you the benefit of the doubt. But how can we, year after year after year after year, we get the same results?
I attended a council meeting and that was one of my first times. And I sat back and I observed how things played out. So Vanessa Hall Harper, she spoke in regards to what she wanted for her community and what our needs were and what she felt was right. And she was interrupted. And then after, it was like a domino thing. Not even a second went by. And well, I passed $1 store and I have two in my community. I have five and I have nine. Nine being the largest number that I heard. There's still a gap. That's six less than what we have. And I know you say, "State facts." I don't know what the facts you're speaking of, but there's still a gap. It's not hard to see. And I just moved back from here and it's easy for me to see. I haven't even been here but a few months. And I see when I go to South Tulsa and I go to the other sides of town, it don't look like North Tulsa. And then how would you feel if for Christmas, you got the same gift every single time? Another dollar store and another dollar store and another dollar store every single time? How would you feel if you got that for Christmas for your birthday? You get tired of it, right? So that's basically what I have to say. In Las Vegas, there was minority communities that had grocery stores, that had cleaners, that had restaurants, that had hotels. But it's so hard for Tulsa to value District One and take action. But rather, they would just say, "Oh, well, we care. It's not believable. We're tired of you guys just talking. We want to see the action." And that's all I ask. My son lives in District One. I live in District One right now. I used to live in Broken Arrow, Oklahoma. I went to Tulsa, I went to Memorial High School. I went to Burke Middle School. I lived in these other districts, but my son deserves better. He is sitting right there and I'm not going away. You think that you guys can just say anything and make us go away? I'm here to stand for my community. Make up your disgust. We're not taking the words, the simple words that you guys want to give to us just to make us go away. That's not going to work anymore. We want to see action. Thank you.
Jeanette Marshall. Good evening, councilors. The scripture teaches us that people are destroyed for lack of knowledge. Tonight, I would suggest to you that the greater tragedy is when we are afforded the knowledge and we fail to heed to that knowledge. The lessons of fact are, North Tulsa has been inundated with Dollar General and Family Dollar stores, point one. Point two, stores of the lack are not a fair representation of economic development. Point three, these stores sell detrimental food products to a population that is predisposed to early onset diabetes, hypertension, heart disease, stroke, cancer, and premature death. A full-service grocery store would be better. The over-representation of these stores projects an underlying message, less is better, to the young people of our community. A message that employment opportunities begin and end with the Dollar General, with the Family Dollar. That the work of the community begins and ends with the Dollar General and the Family Dollar. Approximately 30 years ago, the key thing to do from downtown was to name streets in North Tulsa after black preachers. When you hear it on the surface, you say, "Oh, that's a good thing." But see, it was one thing about every one of those streets. They all were dead-end streets. There was a message in that. And there's a message in Dollar General and Family Dollar. It's imperative that we, as members of the City of Tulsa, embrace the word equity. Not as a catchphrase, but as a true variable of change if we ever want to become one Tulsa. It is for that reason I stand before you tonight and I ask you to endorse, to approve the moratorium. Thank you.
Joyce G. Smith Williams, followed by Vena Morris.
I am Joyce G. Smith Williams. Counselor, you attended this meeting by saying, "Speaking of changing cultures in Tulsa." We need peace. First thing I want to say is, we are not, and none of these communities are. And I don't know why we are expected to be a monolithic community. We all have different thoughts and we have to respect the different thoughts. We all do what we think is best. We hear a lot of ethical rhetoric. And I know y'all familiar with Plato and the rest of these folks. So you know what I'm talking about when I talk about ethical rhetoric. When I sat in the first committee meeting when you were discussing this moratorium, it was clear to me then which way you were going to go. I sat here at the commission meeting and listened to one of our councilors want to talk about alternate facts, even though our own mayor had endorsed the facts that talked about the health inequities. So, you know, it makes you wonder. Now, the needs of Tulsa, of District One are nothing new. What is the purpose of city planning? And we know that you got a master plan. We've heard talk about a master plan earlier this evening. What is the master plan for North Tulsa? And how do we impact that? You know, how do we override this sense of hopelessness? How do we get sustainable resources in our community? You know, we need a grocery store. We had a person from our community talking about public safety at the last meeting. You heard that whole discussion. Well, there are a lot of variables involved with the whole issue of public safety. When our young people don't have jobs, when they don't, when you close city parks in our neighborhood. We've got a former board member who closed seven schools in her own district. You know, and talks and speaks, okay, and speaks of ordering her groceries online with pride. You know, what can we expect? You know, your process people and we are too. We need, we need you to support us. And I'm not attacking anybody up here. I'm not attacking you. I'm asking that you do the right thing. That you allow our community to have impact on how it grows and develops. And that you work with your city planning department. Because this is happening by design. This is not happenstance that our community is like this. Do the right thing.
Hi, y'all. So I'm wondering if we have asked how we got to this place? To a place where members of our city have to come and plead for access to healthy food for 11 more years of life, all within the time constraint of one hour and being told to behave? I'm wondering how we got there and I'm wondering why? And we really wondered why there is no Walmart, nor Sprouts, nor Greases or anything like that in North Tulsa? Why people have to hop from one dollar store to the next just to try to get unhealthy food? I'm wondering if we've asked why that is and how we got those questions? Because some are going to try to argue that it's maybe the high crime rate. When in reality, that doesn't make any sense since the crime in District One is lower or the exact same as any other district in this city. Regardless of the contingency differences that some may have. Others are going to try to argue that it's a lack of organization or demand. I think the last two weeks have proven otherwise. Some will also argue that the district simply hasn't shown it can sustain that kind of economic growth. That too makes no sense since the history of North Tulsa is rooted in black excellence and in black culture. It was rooted in our prosperous, black community in the history of this country until it was destroyed by people who look like me and a lot of you. And the greatest act of domestic terrorism in the history of this country. So it's difficult for us to find a why when that why is not rooted in practicality is actually rooted in systemic racism, racism and systemic injustice that is still so prevalent in our city today. It's prevalent in police brutality. It's prevalent in the inequity of our criminal justice system. It's prevalent in the inequity of our education system. And it shows itself in the 11-year life expectancy gap from North Tulsa to South Tulsa, which is a real thing. And it also shows itself in the lack of access to healthy food because food is everything. Food is everything for our kids. It helps, it affects how they develop, how they learn, how they behave. It affects how they perform in school, whether they get, whether they retain information, whether they can focus, how sick they are and how often they get sick. It affects whether they can excel academically or athletically. It affects their dietary habits and the habits that they pass on to their children. It affects everything and is inextricably linked to their outcomes. In any other space in the world, if you have one minute, thank you, we would consider children lacking access to healthy food a violation of basic human rights. And that is absolutely no different here. There is immense injustice in this city. But North Tulsa and the people of North Tulsa, who are strong and brave and resilient, are not the ones that are responsible for shouldering that burden of fixing it. It is on us to fix that. It is not on one city councilor. It is on nine. It is not on some people. It is on all. So as I stand before the nine of you today, I'm reminded of the nine students who stood in front of a high school in Little Rock, Arkansas in 1957, who stood in front of violence and who stood in front of guns and threats and still decided that as justice stared them in the face, they were not going to back down. So I'm asking you, the nine of you... So I'm asking you, the nine of you, whether you are going to stand with the same fervor against the injustice that faces you? Whether you are going to be a part of that change, or whether you would back down? Thank you.
Alicia, what were the names?
Good evening. I'm Sherri Lasky. And it's been a long day for me. So I'm going to try to make this quick. Everyone's been talking about quality, well, basically quality of, quantity, length of lifetime span. I moved away from Tulsa 2010, moved back 2015. My zip code was 60610. And I moved to 74126, which is about eighteen-year difference in life expectancy based upon those numbers. So just simply moving back home, I lost some life. And I thought, "Well, how can I reclaim that?" You know? Thank God I have good genetics on my side. My maternal grandmother lived to be eighty-eight. My paternal grandmother lived to be ninety-two. So I have genetics on my side. But there are some things that kind of make me stop and wonder, since I'm living out in 74126 zip code. In the middle of the night, when I'm hungry, I have to drive eight miles just to get to a grocery store. Or I can go to my neighborhood stores that sell certain foods that I should not eat in the middle of the night. And because of safety, I don't go there anyway. Okay? So... But what will probably strike you guys, there's approximately thirty-nine million dollars floating around in North Tulsa in food stamps. So that's thirty-nine million dollars that's leaving our community that could actually be circulating in our community, supporting our community and creating jobs, because we have to eat. And that's just one of the things that kind of floors me. Money talks. This is all about money, okay? Some of us can afford to drive across town to go to Costco, all the neighborhood Walmart, and some of us can't, okay? District Three, she's not even here, the lady from District Three. Okay. Okay. Well, someone mentioned that, someone mentioned that they had, they had just the same number of Family Dollar stores in their community. They put Family Dollar stores in poor communities, okay? And that's for a reason. So when we start this gentrification process that's going on, and people start moving into those neighborhoods, because the property value is low, and you can buy a house for fifty thousand dollars and flip it and earn one hundred percent return on it. That's a big difference there. We're talking about money. It's all about money. I have one minute left. That's okay. I just need you to know, just being back here is just disheartening. If I drive MLK from Archer, not Archer, just right down, driving MLK from where we stand right now, going north to Fifty-Ninth Street, you're psychologically bombarded. Your energy level goes down. Once you get to your house, you're like, "I don't want to leave anymore, okay? I'm through. I've had enough." It's mentally draining. But you go to other parts of town, you don't have that experience, okay? Need you to wake up over there. This is important to me. And it's important to all the people that are in here, okay? I'm tired. We're all tired. Look, we don't want any more Family Dollar stores or the neighborhood general Dollar stores in our community. We've had enough of that, okay? And the fact that you can, you don't see that, something's wrong. There's money and poverty. There's money and poverty, and it already shows. If we can have five years of development from this area that we're standing in now, from 2010 to 2015, we can have that same type of development across the other side in the state.
Darryl Knox, followed by Latrice Clam.
Darryl Knox. Madam Chair America and the rest of the council, as Reverend Sarah, opening prayer was so appropriately put. A part of our community, a part of our country, is flooded by natural disaster. Part of our community, District One, has been flooded and has continued to be flooded. Just as Reverend Sarah spoke of the devastation, I hope the council would consider the devastation that another Dollar store would bring to District One. It was a year ago that we were in this very room and spoke against this store to this very council, for the exception of Councillor Hall and Councillor Kimbrough. We in District One are not anti-growth. We are pro-growth and pro-investment. This store doesn't address the needs of District One: fresh fruits and vegetables and quality meat. I humbly ask that this council would hear the majority of District One and honor our opposition to any more Dollar stores. If this is such a great opportunity and such a great investment, I would ask that Councillor Lakeham take that opportunity and put the very first store in District Eight. Martin Luther King. Evil only succeeds when good people do nothing. Dollar stores only succeed when a good council does nothing.
Tracy Chandler.
Okay, Beatrice Brown. Last time we were here, Chief had opened up the can of worms that has been a concern of mine for over a year. My issue is with the bigger agenda that is at hand here. It is more than a community that is saturated with small box discount stores. Dollar General and Family Dollar are solely about profit and not about the best interest of the community that it is supposed to serve. I come today to present my findings and also to make a petition. In an interview with Forbes.com in 2012, it reads, "Dollar General and Family Dollar are star performers of the retail sector amid a down economy turning to so-called 'sin' items to churn even more sales." Dollar General and Family Dollar were already at peak margin sales, but only in an effort to compete with Walmart Neighborhood Markets. Stores that the Dollar General and Family Dollar look for a counter-attack. Mike Kira, who is the Equity Analyst with Morning Star, states, quote, "Sin items are always a great traffic driver and generate higher profit margins than food," end quote. So, there, starting a partnership with McClain, who is the largest tobacco distributor, cigarettes were added to six thousand of the then seventy-three-hundred-plus stores in one summer. Kira also states, quote, "Anytime you're selling tobacco, it's another reason to shop in said stores. They not only repeat purchase, but they addictive repeat purchase," end quote. Brian Winburn, Public Relations Manager for Family Dollar, says that sin items fill an unmet shopper desire. "We know our customer over indexes in tobacco use. Our target customer is the one that previously had to purchase elsewhere," that's end quote. So many have said that District One is not being targeted, that this is economic development for North Tulsa, and I beg to differ. Michael Bloom, who is president for Family Dollar, and I know we're talking about Dollar Generals, but they all are one and the same. "Our average shopper is female, head of household, less than forty thousand dollars a year, which befits the common profile of the everyday smoker and drinker in the United States." Do you know who that is? You're looking at her. "I am forty-four, less than forty thousand dollars a year, and head of my household. I don't drink nor smoke." He calls it the Adapt and Evolve Initiative, and he's very well pleased with the attachment rate that the tobacco and purchases have made. I'm going to skip down since you got me on this thing here. It's not the first time that Dollar General has ever been met with opposition. In 2012, WDRV.com in Louisville, Kentucky, the residents came against Dollar General after they applied for twenty-three licenses to sell liquor in their stores. Jackie McCombe of Portland announced that residents believed that the opening of these stores was only a mask to sell more alcohol sales to a community that doesn't already, that doesn't need them. Now I want you to imagine... Yeah, go past your time. But it comes down to total. Okay, now imagine Dollar General and Family Dollar. You say it's not sixteen, but that's the number that I was having, you know, that we were given. So requesting licenses based on public necessity and convenience is how they are applying for these licenses, as before, and alcohol being available in sixteen locations in one district. Imagine your children walking into a Family Dollar or a Dollar General, and the first thing that they see is sixteen feet of either shelf or refrigeration for beer and wine and liquor. McCombe also says the number of alcohol outlets in the community is directly correlated with the number of murders, family violence, underage drinking, rapes, and other acts of violence. This is what happens when you remove hope from a people. In Indianapolis, Marion County, residents refused Dollar General for the same reason in 2012. In 2014, San Diego Tribune reported that the residents of Vista, California, also refused alcohol sales. Family Dollar was also rejected in East Vista in California as well, for the same reasons. The bigger agenda is the alcohol sales. Then there are those who either ignore it or just don't know the negative effects and permit it. For example, Guthrie, Oklahoma, has been selling low-point beer in their Dollar General stores since 2014. And according to our article, February the fourteenth of this year, Shreveport, Louisiana, Shreveport Times says that Bossier City, Louisiana, has been approved for three stores to sell liquor and beer in their stores in Shreveport and Bossier City. March sixteenth of 2017, both CNBC.com and Clark.com both have articles that state, Todd Vasos, I guess I'm correct in pronouncing that correctly, the Dollar General CEO, said that in an effort once again to compete with Walmart Neighborhood Markets, in 2003, they started testing fresh produce in some of its stores. In the last fourteen years, I want you to remember that number, because I gave you some other numbers while ago. Six thousand stores, correct? Six thousand stores were issued cigarettes in seventy-three-hundred stores, out of seventy-three-hundred stores in one summer. So, fourteen years, Dollar General has been testing the fresh produce in some of its stores, and only is sold in about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty stores, which equals to about one percent of the about thirteen thousand stores that are available right now. Vasos says that one hundred more stores will open this year and have fresh produce and meats available. More stores to come in 2018, being that there is a plan to open one thousand more stores of Dollar General within the year of, matter of fact, 2017. The Dollar General CEO states, "We're moving consumers towards fresh alternative that's better and healthier," citing that it's the right thing to do. So now it comes to my petition. If, I've stated the facts. So if we have to have this Dollar General, we're asking them to do the right thing. Make us a hundred and sixty-one fresh produce and fresh meats. That is one thing that they can do for us. We don't need a saturation. If we have to have another one, do the right thing by District One. Do the right thing by North Tulsa residents and provide. Have them, have it written that this is what they have to do for us. They've done it for other areas, but it's in rural districts. It is not in suburban areas, it's not in urban areas. It is in rural districts only, rural areas only. Fourteen years, and only a hundred and sixty stores have fresh produce and meats. But they gave six thousand stores liquor and tobacco in one summer.
Tracy Chandler, followed by Yvonne Z. Charles Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Chandler. I am the community activist that tells it like it is, because it is what it is until it isn't anymore. So let's talk about what it is. This is what it is. We have an overabundance of Dollar stores. They sell an overabundance of unhealthy food. As a result, we have an overabundance of people with various diseases. Every time I look around at my church, I'm seeing cancer, cancer, cancer. So this needs to stop. We do not have access to healthy foods. We live on average ten to point seven years less than people in South Tulsa. That's the way it is. What I'm working for is anymore, and isn't anymore. I have some questions for you. Having little access to healthy foods, would you move into such a community? Is this the type of community that you would want? Is this what you want for your children, for your grandchildren? What are you going to say to your family, your kids, your grandkids, when they say, "What did you do about making Tulsa greater?" The other thing that I want to know is, we want, we do want economic development, but not at the expense of the health of the citizens. What I want to do is ask you this. Are you going to be a man, or are you going to be a mouse? Are you going to have the courage to stand up and do what is right? How can you say you love Tulsa and you allow the demise of a community? That is tattamount to genocide. So what are you going to say? What would be your legacy? The challenge is, treat us the way you would want to be treated. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Good morning, council. My name is Yvonne Z. Charles Johnson. And this past Saturday, I celebrated my sixty-fifth birthday. I was born in Moton Hospital. Sixty-five years ago, I grew up two blocks from there, attended Dunbar Elementary School, Carver Junior High School, Booker T. Washington High School, and then left Tulsa to see what the rest of the world was like. It was a culture shock to leave Tulsa. I grew up in an all-black community, went to all-black schools, and the thing that I think most people don't realize when we talk about those times, which some people say were segregated, was all the while, I was very happy. I loved black people. I liked living with black people. I liked being a black person. I liked my black family. I liked the black hospital I was born in. So when I came back to Tulsa this last time, I actually kind of gave a phrase to the fourth quarter of my life, and I said, "Oh, this time, I'm going black to Tulsa." When I came here before, thirty years ago this summer, I came as a Unitarian minister. I was ordained at All Souls Church on a mission to start a Unitarian Universal Church in North Tulsa, which still exists thirty years later, thanks to many good people, some of whom are here. But when I came back, I preached a while at All Souls, and one day, I had, and it was then, when I was thirty-five, that I first found out about the Race Massacre, aka a race riot or race war. I announced to the congregation, having just found out about this, that I would preach about it the next Sunday. At the end of the service, when I went back to the lectern to get my text, Francis Campbell stopped me at the door. Some of you may know Francis Campbell. He's a former city auditor at the city of Tulsa. His name used to be on that black building, that restaurant over Amadou's now. Francis Campbell said to me, "Please don't do it. Please do not preach about that riot here." Please do not preach about that riot here." And he said, "That family has suffered enough." And I didn't know the complete story then, but I said, "What family are you talking about?" And he was talking about the family of the editors of the Tulsa Tribune, reputed to have written the To Lynch Negro Tonight message. And I could feel how much empathy he had with that family for what they suffered for, but I couldn't quite feel the empathy for the people who really suffered and died in this community.
What they got to do with food?
I'm getting to that. I'm gonna say the word reparations here, because when I came back to Tulsa, somebody said to me, "If you want to work," and I do, you do want to work, I do want to work, they said, "Don't say the word reparations in any mixed company, because you will not be employed." So I preached the sermon then, I'm saying the word reparations tonight, and you can look at this cage through a microscope and think it's clear, or just about one store, but this is about the big cage that is built around this whole community for the violence that happened here to my people and to your people, whether you realize it or not. And that must be paid for with reparations. It has to be paid, it has to be paid for in some way. One of the people who voted yes or no last week, said, like, two weeks ago, said that he has to vote no, because he's an economist. I would ask you, sir, and excuse me for not knowing your name.
I didn't.
Yeah.
I don't like you.
No, no. You said, "I have to vote no, because I'm an economist," and I would simply ask you what kind of economist you are. I liken it to saying, you know, if Donald Trump says, "I am a president," somebody needs to ask Donald Trump, "What kind of president are you?" And I'm asking you, "What kind of economist are you?" This is a moral issue. It's an issue about a community. This is what Tulsa Development Authority said about development and about what is now called the Unity Heritage Neighborhoods Plan. Used to be called the Greenwood Heritage Neighborhood Plan, but everything Greenwood is going away, if you haven't noticed, it is going away. They said, in terms of the neighborhood, that includes much of North Tulsa, they said historical resources are some of the best resources, and then they went on to say, "Key among these in this area is Brady Heights." And I said, "What's wrong with this picture? This is what it's like to come back to Tulsa." I understood that there was a John Hope Franklin Reconciliation Park, and I know Greenwood, I know all about Tulsa, and I couldn't find it. I said, "What's wrong with this picture?" I said, "This is what it's like to come back to Tulsa. You can't miss what you can't measure." The only person I know, the only people I know, and I don't think, you all don't look like you listen too much, a parliament funkadelic, but they have a song called, "You Can't Miss What You Can't Measure." We're about to get to the point in Tulsa where you cannot measure what Black Wall Street was, what Greenwood was, and to put this little box store on the edge of the Carver and Dunbar, the things that some of us know and can measure is doing violence again to the community.
All right.
Goal number six of TBA's program about, did I get a warning?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, why did somebody tell?
Six minutes.
Oh, did I? I'm sorry. I'm just gonna finish this. Tulsa Development Authority's for Unity, Unity Heritage Neighborhood Plan, goal number six says to celebrate the area's history and strengthen its character. It gets kind of paternalistic here, but you can get your own copy and read about how they're talking about it. And this one is that during the planning process, many residents and local stakeholders expressed concerns about the stigma with which the area is perceived. Citizens feel it impacts the business community, neighborhoods, and local services. In that regard, everyone has a role in helping to redefine how the larger Tulsa region views the area. You, too, and I hang up here, when I, when I came up here, I said, "You know, these people aren't gonna, they're not gonna change their mind tonight. I'm gonna say it right now, you still have time to change your mind and vote to carry this moratorium forward, and you have the opportunity to keep making yourselves an ex-official member of the hundredth anniversary of the Race Massacre Committee, and don't stop. Don't discontinue."
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Tracy Gibbs, followed by our last speaker, Amy Shelton.
So we, we, we've hit the one-hour mark, but we're gonna let these last two folks go and have their time, so we're not due, so go ahead.
Thank you to the council, thank you to our mayor, thank you for giving us the opportunity, the last two of us, to speak, we really appreciate that. I know it has been a long night, and so I just want to keep this really, really short. Just, my name is Tracy Gibbs. I am a proud owner of two properties in North Tulsa. Both of them are in walking distance of a box store. I also own Gibbs Shopping Center, which is on Forty-Sixth Street North, and our family started the business because we, we had a desire to be a planning base, so that others could come and bring their businesses to North Tulsa, be at a grocery store, those things that can make the community viable. We had people asking us to put liquor stores in there. We have taken a stance regarding there are certain things we'll allow in our shopping center and certain things that we won't allow in our shopping center, because our whole desire is that we would be the base for feed, to feed the community something positive. And so that's what we had desire. Now, truth be told, we are sinking, because we have not been able to get the, the businesses to come to us, because they're not looking to come to North Tulsa, those large businesses. So I'm saying all that to say, far as the property values, being a business owner, I think, like, like you had mentioned, far as being a business owner, a business owner too. And I could be a business owner with, that could say, "These are the things that I would like to see in my business, and it doesn't matter what the community wants or, or don't want. I'm in here to make a profit." I could be that type of person, or I can have standard and values to say, "You know what? I'm not going to do that." So I'm here just to say one thing to everyone that's here tonight. There's one word I want to ask you, because everyone that came here, you most likely came here and you already had your mind made up regarding what you were gonna decide on tonight, but just like the gentleman just said a few minutes ago, you have a chance to make a different choice. You really do. And so I want to ask you tonight regarding a choice. A choice is, there's an opportunity or power to make a decision. A choice is an opportunity or a power to make a decision. You have an opportunity and the power to make a decision tonight, which is something that North Tulsa community doesn't have. I mean, they don't have an opportunity to go to a different store. If you live in Broken Arrow, you live in South Tulsa, you have an opportunity to do something different. Someone had said, "We have dollar stores in our community." You do, but you have a choice. That's a huge difference. It's a huge difference. When you don't have a choice, that's a big, big difference. And a choice, another thing about choices, a choice brings power. I'm just asking tonight, bring the power back to North Tulsa. Bring the power back to North Tulsa, where a group of community, where a group of people, a community can have a decision to where they, if they want to go to a dollar store, they can go to a dollar store. If they want to go to a grocery store, Walmart, whatever, they have a choice. Give them the power to make a choice. And it goes beyond to saying, "We don't want the dollar store." We're just asking for bigger choices. That's it. And so thank you again for your time, I really appreciate it.
Next speaker, Amy Shelton.
Good evening, Councilor. Amy Shelton, I also serve as an elected official, so I appreciate the challenge, what you have before you, of weighing your own personal thoughts versus what you think your constituents are thinking. I've asked you to defer to Councilwoman Hall Harper on this, as she stands here to represent her community. My fourteen-month-old was crawling around in the back earlier tonight for the first hour. I drive four miles to Sprouts, ten miles to an Aldi to shop for healthy, affordable food for her, and a lot of our neighbors on the north side don't have that, that luxury of driving to get to healthy food. It's unfathomable to me of what it would be like to have zero access to fresh produce and fresh meat. And so again, ask you to defer to those who are pleading for that opportunity for their community. I appreciate your commitment to business development and the desire to make this a business-friendly community. As a homeowner, I'm grateful for that. This moratorium will discourage only one type of development, and it's one that it seems the community would not miss. I also, I just want to point out that the free market has not been effective in dealing with food deserts. And if we're serious about addressing the eleven-year, eleven-year life disparity, it will take intervention of some sort from this council to create the business environment, the economic environment for, for grocery stores to be able to flourish and for other development to be kept out. So ask me to consider that. If we're serious about addressing that, making this a city that serves all of our citizens, it will take intervention. If we just leave it to free market economics to do its thing, it will remain the way that it is. The longer that we delay, the fewer prime locations are available that will be attractive to a grocery store to come to the north side. And so I ask you to intervene before it is too late. Again, to defer to Councilwoman Hall Harper and her desire to serve her community, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. And now, who are the speakers who are opposing the moratorium? We have three, is that correct, Alicia?
That's correct.
Okay. And this, because we have three, and it'll be well under, obviously, the thirty minutes, they will be limited to five minutes each. Councilor Patrick, if you could give them a warning, a minute out. Okay, first speaker, we should call the first speaker, please.
Mario Johnson, followed by Bobby Burnett.
Good evening, everyone, councilors. I'm Mario Johnson. And how's everybody out there?
Yeah.
Good, good, good. Okay, well, we kind of believe that, I believe that there is enough Family Dollars and Dollar Generals. But we are just saying that a moratorium is not the method, because it's not gonna really stop Dollar Generals and Family Dollars from, from building and, you know, and stuff like that. So we're saying that we need to focus on the real issues, and that is having quality grocery stores, well, quality grocery stores in our communities. You know, that's what we need to focus on, the, the, the right methods. And so I'm here to say that, that I believe that a moratorium would not do anything good for the community, but I do believe that, that we all want the right stuff in our community. We want quality grocery stores, we want good education, I mean, we want the north side to thrive, we want to see a, 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 a social scene in North Tulsa. That's what we want to see. So that's what we gotta focus on, something that's gonna bring us all together, and when we come together, lift up our voice, let our voices be heard, we'll be surprised of how many ti, how many people in the city will get behind that. That's really what we need, 'cause I was, I spent most of my life in North Tulsa. And, and, and from what I see, most people die from hard drugs and black-on-black crime. You know, I said mostly. I said mostly in, in quicker, okay? Quicker, they die from black-on-black crime and hard drugs. And that's the truth. But see, when y'all were speaking, I showed all the respect, and I didn't say a word. Okay? So, so show me the same respect that I, that I showed y'all. You can say, "Come on, you can do all that," but what I'm saying is, "Really."
Come on, and, and, oh, guys, guys, let him, yes, sir, you go, you're right. Go ahead, and, and he's right. And I know, I know people feel strongly about this, but he did. Let him speak, let him say, we've only got a couple speakers here.
Okay. So, a moratorium is not going to stop Dollar General. But let's focus on really how we can stop them, if we want to stop them. We can put quality stores all around the north side, and people won't go to them. I mean, we can boycott them, and people still won't go to the Family Dollars and Dollar Generals. See, the, 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 I'm, I'm in problem is economics. You know what I'm saying? The, the people's budget. You can put them in, you can bring a big box grocery store with discount items in there, and according to their budget, they're gonna go and spend, and spend and buy the discount items. So, see, we need to focus on really what the real issues are, and that's the economics. I mean, let's open up the parks, give, give the children something to do, where they won't, you know, be wandering around drinking alcohol and things like that. That's what we have to do. We have to, you know, create that economic development on a higher level, and that's what we all together as a city have to come together and focus on. We all understand that we have enough dollar stores. We're not sitting up here saying, "Oh, we're happy with what we got, give us more." We're just saying, let's focus on the most important things that's gonna help, you know, that's gonna help minimize the dollar stores. And that's focus on the economics, the moratorium is not gonna stop.
We'll fight dollars.
It's not gonna stop.
Ma'am, ma'am.
It's a temporary ban.
We're gonna, ma'am, please don't, please don't, because I don't want to, I don't want to have to ask you to leave, but you've got to let him speak, and the other speaker.
It's a temp, temporary ban. That's all it is. That's all it is. So that's not saying that it's a terminated ban, re temporary. So we all, what we are doing is we wasting our time focusing on the wrong thing.
We have one minute.
That's all. We gotta focus on the real issues, if we, if we want to, better quality, everybody want quality, but everybody can afford it. That's what we need to focus on, jobs, more opportunities in our community. Let's focus on that.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Bobby Burnett, followed by our last speaker, Darlene King.
Good evening. My name is Bobby Burnett. District One, Councilor Harper. Councilors, Honorable G.T. Bynum, Mayor, who understand I have a real estate company. And I'm, I'm always question somebody born in the month of August, because I was born in the month of August. It's a good month. Supporters of the moratorium, opposition to the moratorium, and all who are making up their minds, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening on behalf of North Tulsa Economic Development Initiative, INTED. I'm going to share with you a letter from the INTED Board, and signed by the INTED President, Dr. Lonatara Haskin. North Tulsa Economic Development Initiative, Board of Directors and Members, who are in opposition to the proposed moratorium that has been placed on the city council agenda for consideration. We are concerned by ongoing discussion to place a moratorium on economic development in North Tulsa. It remains important that the city council establish the proper atmosphere that demonstrates the city's concern about building brighter futures for the North Tulsa community as we pursue the One Tulsa goal. We're requesting that the elected city council governing body vote no on the moratorium recommendation, which will negatively impact the rebuilding of North Tulsa. The opinions provided at the city council meeting in June two thousand seventeen, and on August second, and August ninth, and tonight, continue to fall short in providing the justification for such a drastic action. What is clear to supporters of the moratorium is that they do not want Family Dollar or Dollar General stores to be built in North Tulsa. Although the moratorium is being presented as a temporary measure, it is not in the best interest of the North Tulsa community, nor the city of Tulsa. What we would like to see is more economic development, supported by elected officials and the community working with INTED, to positively impact opportunities that contribute to workforce development and increased income for many members of the community. It is not apparent that there are efforts underway within the next six months that will result in a proliferation of Family Dollar and Dollar General stores. INTED encourages all of us to focus on what matters most: economic development, job opportunities, workforce skill development, and healthy food options in North Tulsa. We should collectively engage in a serious strategic discussion focused on attracting or, and or establishing a big box grocery store with healthy food options in North Tulsa. INTED mission is to rebuild North Tulsa one project at a time. The rebuilding of a community continues to be negatively impacted as discussion of a moratorium is considered. We are moving, moving North Tulsa forward. However, we ask that the city look at the only ones that will support economic development in North Tulsa. The question is that if a moratorium is not good for all of Tulsa, why would it be good for North Tulsa? The city councilor's role is to help support what is best for Tulsa. Whether we reside in your district or not, we're part of your constituency base, and strongly encourage you to vote no on the proposed moratorium for the city of Tulsa. It is important that we all concentrate on what is most important to families- to families in all of Tulsa, with a particular focus on our most vulnerable citizens in North Tulsa. Working together, we will make a difference that improves the quality of life for all Tulsa residents. On behalf of INTED, Dr. Lorna Turner-Hall will gladly provide additional information to support our position.
Yeah, one minute.
Please do not hesitate to contact her. And I'd like to, to close by leaving you with this. And this is for all of us in the room. And this, this is Proverbs 4, 5 through 7. It says, "Get wisdom, get understanding. Do not forget my words, I swear for them. Do not forsake wisdom, and she will protect you. Love her, and she will watch over you. Wisdom is supreme, therefore get wisdom. Though it costs all you have, get understanding." Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker, please.
Our last speaker, Darlene Carroll.
Hello, um, Mayor and the City Council, my name is Darlene Carroll. Uh, one thing I would like to say, I grew up in Greenwood, North Carolina, so, uh, economic development is very important to me. My father, um, had his own, um, he was a builder, and what he did to help out our community, he gave, uh, all the men in the community who's ahead of house, um, jobs. And my brother gave the young men's job. So it wasn't up to the city council to take care of our family. It was up to the men in the community to do their jobs. And one thing I would like to share, um, many of you got this email from me. My name is Darlene Carroll. And I was very much concerned when they said that there were 16, 16 or 15 general, uh, dollar stores in the community. And I was, I'm the kind of person, my degrees are in, uh, working on, in psychology. And I'm gonna go and do research, I don't care what nobody says. I'm gonna go back and do my research, so that's what I did, that's what I'm used to doing. And this is what I found.
Oh, gosh.
I believe that if you're gonna talk about something, you need to have proof. Okay, uh, what I did, I did a spreadsheet. I noticed last week when they did the spreadsheet of the dollar store, it was all in a map. And it being an educator, you got to, uh, put it in a spreadsheet so everybody can understand, so no one would be, um, you know, uh, blind about what somebody said. You, you can't take people for their words, you gotta do your research. And what I found out, that, um, I called corporate, um, Dollar General. And what I found out, that the ladies who, the councilor that was sitting there for East Tulsa, she had the most dollar stores in her area, 15. I got the research, please. And anyway, North Tulsa and South Tulsa have the same amount. So there's no racism done. But anyway, West Tulsa has three, East Tulsa have, uh, eight dollar stores, Sandspring has three, Jinx has one, Broken Arrow has one. North Tulsa have five dollar stores, South Tulsa have five. So there's no racism there. And number two of 20, 20 Family Dollars, um, stores in Oklahoma, five was in North Tulsa, five was in, uh, South Tulsa, seven was in East Tulsa. And West Tulsa was one, Suposa, Sepulpa had one, Dixie had one. And so that was my finding. And I'm against a moratorium. And I pray that you do the right thing for the community. No matter what, God knows your heart, and whatever vote you vote, you know, we're behind all of the city council. And one day, uh, Councilor, Vanessa, we would like to say, "We wanna be on your side, but you have to come and sit down and talk to us." Oh, no, no, you did, you, you did. I went into the others, I, I went into the community, I talked to a lot of people. And they were against it too. But all we ask of you, if you want us to, to be behind you, sit, please come and talk to us. That's, be quiet, all we ask is talk to us, that's all we ask of you. We can beg you if you don't talk to us. And we believe in, we believe in you too. But please talk to us too. Give us that time to talk to us, that's all we ask of you. You'll find out, we all are on the same page, but you want, come, please talk to us. That's all we ask of you. I ask you to talk to us. But give us a minute, you have to come and talk to us. We're begging, but you gotta talk to us. God got a great thing, you know, because this, please, you know, pray. And God, God's gonna bless you. You gotta break, you don't let, no matter what, nobody says, you gonna have to change some of your friends. All right, you see, you see. Stop, you know what I'm talking about.
Ma'am, okay, I think we've kinda got off topic too, so. Thank you. All right, everybody catch your breath. Because that was probably the shortest part of the evening. Uh, because we're, people were sorta out of sync here. We moved back into, that was the last of our speakers, so we moved back into council discussion. Um, before I open it to council discussion, Susan, can I, could you clarify, just because the issue that came up on the liquor stores and kinda what, what are, or, you know, whoever, but just what the rules are and, and how that will apply when that law changes? Does anybody know?
I can clarify, there's no spacing requirement. They'll be able to sell high point beer and wine when the law goes into effect, but liquor, there is no state law that allows that to be sold anywhere in a liquor store. So.
Right. And I know, I'm not, I just don't know what the rules are, so.
So Dollar General stores and Family Dollars could theoretically sell, should they choose, high point beer and wine. Uh, but it will not have the same spacing requirement that liquor stores have from schools and churches.
As a, as a, a, a point, just a question, and I don't, I mean, it's not just, obviously, this would be something that we'd be talking about just for District One, but is that something, are we able to impose that spacing requirement for schools and churches and the like? If, and, and I don't mean just for Dollar General, but for all grocery stores that were selling liquor or something like that? Is that something we could do on a city level?
That's a preemption question. That laws more strict than the state law, and it wouldn't be allowed.
And, and obviously, that kinda goes beyond just the specifics here, but I think it's an issue that we should look into regardless of what happens tonight. Okay, um, we're now in the council discussion stage, and I would be surprised if there is not some, councilors who have some comments or questions. Counselor Kimbrough.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I appreciate everybody coming out. Over the past two meetings where we've taken up this very important topic, and I appreciate you all speaking your mind. I've gotten to hear a lot of honesty. And in that honesty, I've gotten to see, uh, a lot of people that I call fellow Tulsans that are hurt, that are hurting, that are struggling, that don't have the privilege and the access that I do. Uh, I'll answer your question, Charles, yeah, I value you. I'll, I'll take up, I don't remember where Ms. Gibbs went. Uh, I admire folks. Oh, you're still here.
I am.
That's, that, to me, is exemplary grassroots. Do it the right way, be a good community partner, maintain standards, keep your morals, earn a profit. My hat's off to you. Uh, that, that should be. That, that District One is beset by predatory retailers. Absolutely damn right, I get that. Our state is. We have about four times as many in Oklahoma of these, these types of stores as in the entire state of California. A fraction of the population, I get it. But they're clever. They're, one of, one of the examples we're talking about is a $19 billion a year enterprise. They've figured some stuff out. They've figured out how, you know, in what is, is a mostly predatory nature, where to set up shop. They got it figured out. We had this discussion back in March. Vanessa and I, I got into it, and we went into the nuts and bolts of it. I believe, if I recall correctly, regarding baby diapers and toilet tissue. And I explained an economic scheme.